Hello, everyone. The time 6:30 will commence tonight's meeting. I'd like to commence tonight's meeting. The Select Board meeting held Monday, February 27, 2023, held here in the Walk White Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Broadcast live on local cable, Channel 18. Stream live on the town of Mashpee website. The time's now 6:30. Convene, meeting in open session. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll start off with public comment. Well, first, let me start off with the approval of minutes from Monday, February 13. I'll accept a motion to approve as presented.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second. Is there any discussion? Michaela?
Yes. And I think it was our discussion that confused the minutes a little bit. If we go to page seven, I just think we have something that's inaccurate and I worry about it being public record. Page seven, 1 to 3rd paragraph, it says a ban on cesspools. Okay. Then it says, "All cesspools proposed outside of Phase 1 and 2, including..." I would just ask that we redact that because we're not going to act on cesspools anymore. It should be just all Title V systems. We can't put it, according to the state, we wouldn't, we wouldn't send cesspools to be approved because we can't.
Excuse me, we talked about it, though, right?
We talked about cesspools and we talked about Title V. I just think that line is inaccurate. If we had a cesspool proposed, it wouldn't even, it wouldn't go to the Health Department. All title, I think, to be accurate, we want to say, "All Title V systems proposed outside of Phase 1 and Phase 2 must be approved by the Board of Health."
Are you suggesting it's inaccurate in substance or it's inaccurate in terms of what was said? Because that would be what the minutes reflect.
That's, I understand that. I, it's inaccurate in terms of substance. I did not go back and listen to the meeting. So if we're, this says that we would accept proposals for cesspools.
Then I would respectfully request that the board table the approval of the minutes until we've had an opportunity to check.
Yeah, because...
I would agree. I think that there could be some confusion there. If this was this, you know, emergency situation where there had to be a repair, where there was no wastewater treatment plant in the ground, we can allow that to contain the waste.
Cesspools.
Cess, the cesspool.
Okay. So maybe I'm misreading. When I hear "all cesspools proposed", I think that we're proposing a cesspool, so...
I think that might be an emergency situation.
We're repairing a cesspool.
We're going to put it in until the wastewater treatment system's in place.
Okay.
I mean, it could, it could be 10 years before it gets to wherever that issue might be.
Sure, no, no, I understand completely. I just thought the language to say we're approving cesspools was not accurate. And, but I didn't go back and watch the meeting again.
But this was just a discussion, though, right?
I thought we were, I thought the discussion was to ban cesspools within 100, 100-foot buffer as a priority.
This was just a discussion, though, so I don't...
There was nothing to vote on.
So I'm a little confused by all cesspools myself.
Okay. I just think, I think it's...
We can, yeah, we can...
So maybe table them and go back and look at the table.
That's what I would suggest, Mr. Chair, because I certainly don't want to go by my memory because I don't recall what you said.
I thought it was, I thought we were asking for the ban to take effect within 100-foot buffers of water sheds.
Okay.
As I recall.
And...
I make a motion to put off the approving of the Monday, February 13, 2023, regular minutes till next week.
Second.
Second.
Procedurally, I'm trying to think. We're in the middle of a motion already. So I guess we could just vote no.
Oh, for the first one?
And then for the first motion and then table.
I don't think anybody seconded it.
No, we have Tom second.
Yeah.
John made the motion.
It wasn't me. You did?
Seconded the first one.
The first one.
Yes, I did. Good call.
So I would say, I would say vote no to approve and then we'll make a motion to table.
Sure.
Procedurally.
No to approve.
So roll call vote on approving the February 20, February 13 meeting minutes.
No.
Carol?
No.
John?
No.
Michaela? And I'm a no as well, that motion fails unanimously. And I entertain a motion to table per discussion for, to be taken up at a future meeting.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on that motion?
No.
Roll call vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol? I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimous. We'll go to public comment. You only have one. Ken DeBrowski, if you'd please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Ken DeBrowski, 3 Grayfield Land. Got a handout tonight. I ran some numbers. I guess since the last time we were here, Mr. Collins kind of walked back some of his panicked rhetoric. And, but, I hate to say it, you know, I think you guys are misinterpreting what I'm, what I was going after here. Okay. The, there's still an 800-pound gorilla in the room and it's called the Funding for Wastewater. Okay? And, I mean, I ran some numbers. And, okay, so we have allocated the room tax and the W-I-I-F, okay? W-I-I-F is worth about 1.1 million, okay? Because we have a, our tax levy was, you know, 56 million. It's a 2%, so figure 1.1 from that. According to the Finance Director, we get about a million annually from the room tax, but that's split 75-25, so you only get about 750,000 off of that. So let's be generous and add them together and call that 2 million, just to keep the math simple. Okay? This facility that we have with the state that's allowing us the interest-free loan, okay, that's a 30-year note. So just do the math, right? And you can basically fund 60 million out of that. Okay? So against that 60 million, from the original 54, we've burnt, we allocated 39, okay? From the meeting packet today, we have another 12 going in there. So you're basically in the 50-plus area. So, and again, this is for Phase 1. So at the end of Phase 1, we've burnt through about 80% of our borrowing capacity, but have only connected about 5% of our homes. So again, you've got a huge disconnect here. Now, I understand that there are various funding mechanisms that we can possibly use to, I guess, close that gap. One of them is going back to the state and saying, "Okay, this is an unfunded mandate that you guys have. You need to fund us." Okay? You know, I don't know where we are on that. I don't know. I mean, I guess Mr. Jack will probably be able to, you know, enlighten us more. I don't know what the probability of success of that is. But, I mean, that's one thing. The other thing is betterments, okay? And that is just pushing the piles of sand around, okay? It's, you know, it's taking it from the general tax base to, you know, individuals who hook up. So again, but my whole point here is we have got a gigantic gap between where Phase 1 leaves us and how we're going to pay for the rest of it. And that's what I'm talking about. Now, again, what I would do, if I was king here, okay? We got that 4%, that surtax that we've, that we jerk around. Okay, just give me a minute, Wayne. Okay? We've jerked that around a number of times since I've lived here. It was three, it was one and a half, but now it's four. What I would do is I would make that three and one, okay? Again, priorities change. If we get through this, then go back to two and two. But I would throw three at the sewers and one at the CPC. But that's it. I'm out of time. See you guys in two weeks.
Thank you. Did you want to go now? John Cotton, Selectman Cotton, has asked to step away from the table to present public comment at this time.
John Cotton, 30 Knobs Road. This past week at the Zoning Board of Appeals, a citizen brought visual aids under public comment. The visual aids were bourbon and beer. It was a reminder of what an attorney said in a past ZBA meeting. This citizen, I believe, was highlighting their concern of the Raise and Replace guidelines. Although some may chuckle, and some members of the audience did, this was not funny to me or to members of the ZBA. To give the impression that the committee is not working above board is not fair and it's disrespectful. This volunteer committee, just like many others in this, in this town, devote many hours of their time and energy to Mashpee. Anyone that serves on our committees and boards deserves respect. I hope in this case that the intent was only to bring heightened awareness to the Raise and Replace and not to insult the ZBA. That being said, I would like to apologize to the ZBA Board. Furthermore, I would like to say thank you to all the citizens that serve on committees and boards throughout the town of Mashpee and thank you for your service. And I, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Moving on, we're going to continue on with appointments and hearings. 6:35, we have a public hearing that was continued from February 13, the new Keno license application of Shre Kamkaya Devi Incorporated, DBA Mashpee Minimart, Sabod Basnet. Are you present? If you'd come forward and sit at the table, thank you. Secretary, would you please read the announcement?
How many? All right, thanks, bud. In accordance with Master Noir 10/27, Mashpee Support Selectmen, we'll conduct a public hearing on the application of Shreen Kamakali, Kamakalia.
Kamaka Devi.
Thank you.
Devi.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thanks. Doing business as Mashpee Minimart 401 Nathan Ellis Highway for a Keno, for a Keno license. Said hearing will be held Monday, February 13, 2023, at 6:40 PM at the White Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North. North Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. My name is Sabod Basnet. I'm the owner of Mashpee Minimart. So I already have a Keno license. I'm just looking for the screen to put him inside the store. That's all.
I think some of the board members had some questions or concerns.
You're looking to put the screen?
Yeah, inside the store. That's it.
To announcing that you have Keno?
No.
No?
Just like a monitor, you know, when you go to the store.
But you already have...
Every store has a Keno. Yeah, I already have a license. So I need to put the monitor inside. The people can look the winning number.
Okay.
That's it.
And you have, you have to come in front? You already have the license, so they have to come in front of us for an approval for that? For, for the screen?
No, it's not, it's...
It, go ahead.
It, it's just a, a public hearing, just so the public knows, you know, it's happening. The Massachusetts Lottery takes care of that part of it.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, if you don't, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind?
Yes, go ahead, John.
So, one of, if I'm remembering correct, in the past, there were some issues of concern of safety, signs, blocking windows.
Oh, no, it's, it's not going to be in the window. It's going to be inside the building.
No, no, past.
In the, in the past, with, basically, we were concerned with safety, where things were blocking the windows so there was no visual sight inside the building. And I think at the time, it was the questionable safety for others, where if something happened inside the store, you couldn't, because it was everything, all those things were blocking the windows.
Oh, no, I have corrected that things already.
So I guess my question would be is, I, I believe we, we enabled the town manager to...
I, I'm not aware of any current violations. It was addressed by the inspector and to my knowledge, it was corrected because if it wasn't, I assume somebody would have brought it to my attention.
Okay.
So, so my presumption is that it's been corrected. And that's what you're attesting to, correct?
Yes, sir.
If I can jump up, I just drove by. So there's a number of s- signs, lighted displays in the windows right now.
What's the number of sign is, means?
The number means the amount of, they're all separate signs that are held, put on the glass separately. So the number of them, so you cover a lot of the glass. If you wanted to put your na, your name of your, your store on the glass, that's fine. If you want to put a small area of signage, and I forget what the percentage is, and I should have, but it's, I was on design plan review. It must have been more than 10 years now, so it doesn't, it doesn't come back that quickly. There are a number of signs there. I don't understand the need for the signs because you do not have a clear view into the store, which, for the safety of a police officer, if they're ever, we've done this before. So that they, if they were to look in there, or they had a report of a robbery or something of that nature, they wouldn't have to go in there blind with the lights and everything blocked out because of the signage. I don't know why that hasn't been addressed because there is signage all over the front of that building. More than 50% of the, each window is covered by signage. Would you agree with that?
The sign is there since I started business. I don't put anything extra in.
I don't care who did it.
Yeah.
I wanted, it should be in compliance with the bylaws.
Yeah, let me know, let me know still what I have to do it, but I have taken a lot of signage before.
So it was, there was more signage before. Doesn't mean you're in compliance, though. We have guidelines and, and everybody complies to the guidelines.
Okay.
You know, if, if you needed an extra sign somewhere, you can come back and ask for permission.
Mm-hmm.
But you can't just go about putting the signs in the window because everybody else would like to have it as well.
Yeah.
And that's, I know that I was on design plan review. We looked at the beauty of Mashpee. Mashpee is a beautiful place to live. We take pride in that. And I think you should take pride in your store, too. I know you've done well. I see traffic going there all the time. I don't, I don't see the need for the additional signage. I really don't. But I do feel and I do know that you're, you're over the limit. Percentage-wise, I can't tell you, but you are over the limits, limit. It's more than 50% of the glass in each of those side windows that is covered by signage.
You have to let me know what I have to take it out because, you know what I mean? I don't know because this has been sitting. Every store has a signage.
And we're going to make, we're going to meet the, the requirements of the town bylaws. Is that right?
Yes, that's fine, you know, I always do the...
I can vote on this and we'll take care of that this week, okay? Are you at the store frequently?
I have another location, so I'm back and forth. But if you give me a call or I can call you, meet you over there, that's fine, no problem.
Fair enough. We'll do that. I'm not going to hold it up, but I want to correct it this time because we've done this a couple of times. Let's clear the air on this. I'll bring the, the building commissioner with me. I'll see if we can set something up, go in there and just make sure this is done properly.
Okay.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so I'm expecting a call from you guys or you want me to call you back?
Do you want to coordinate with the town manager directly? As, as, as the manager of the town, he can help coordinate with whoever you need to make arrangements with.
We'll definitely make sure that there's an onsite visit.
All right. Thank you very much.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, did we take any comment from the public? Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this application? Hearing none, I'd accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well.
I make a motion to approve the Keno screen license for Mashpee Minimart.
I would suggest edit, make an edit to that to make it a conditional approval to conform with current regulations and bylaws.
And bylaws. So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol? I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on, we have 6:40, Underground Cable and Conduit Hearing, N-Star Electric Company, DBA Ever Source Energy, work order number 11694812, 29 Echo Road. Anyone from Ever Source present?
No. Ever Source wasn't coming in. It's just a request. It's a public hearing so the public can comment on it if necessary. If not, no objections and I would prove that you guys vote to approve.
So I'd open, open it up to any public comment on this matter? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Can I ask, can I ask one question quickly?
Sure.
Have the director of buttis notified of these, the, this? It is, they have it.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I'll second the motion.
All right, having a first and second on the motion to close the public hearing on this particular work order, any discussion? Hearing none, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. I'd accept a motion to approve the request for the work order.
So moved.
11694812, Echo, 29 Echo Road. Hearing of first and second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion's unanimous. Next, we have a discussion on approval of Ever Source easement, work order number 2396598101, Red Brick Road.
The town attorney has looked at this easement and has approved as, as submitted to you guys.
I'd entertain a motion to approve work order 2396598.
So moved.
Second.
As presented. Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Carol? I'm a yes as well. That motion's passed unanimously. Next, we have public hearing on the transfer of liquor license, the Quashnet DNW LLC, DBA Valley Grill, for a transfer of the alcoholic beverages license, number 004RS0670309 Old Barnstable Road, Mashpee, Mass. Old Barnstable Road, Mashpee, Mass. Dawn Tormey, if you're present, if you'd come to the table. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm her counsel, may I join her?
Sure, yes. Yes, if we could open the public hearing. Secretary, if you want to read the announcement.
Will do, thanks. Pursuant to chapter 138 of the Massachusetts general bylaws, the select board acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on the application of Quashnet DNW LLC, doing business as Valley Grill, for the transfer of alcoholic beverages license, number 004-5-RS-0670309, Old Barnstable Road, Mashpee, Mass 02649. Said hearing will be held on Monday, February 27, 2023, at 6:45 PM, at the meeting room, Town Hall, 16th Great Network, Mashpee, Mass.
Thank you. You want to just give a brief overview of what's being proposed and under consideration?
So my client, Dawn Tormey, and I believe most of you know her, and she came before you not too long ago.
Could you just pull that mic?
Oh, sorry. As part of this, is asking for the current alcohol license to be transferred to her new entity, so she can take over management of the Quashnet Valley Grill. She is, there are gonna be no changes to the operation, she's extremely qualified, and she has no previous problems, or has never been a part of any violations in the past.
Does the, anyone from the board have any questions?
Nope.
Does anyone from the public have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. I'd accept a motion to approve the change to the license as presented.
So moved.
Hearing of first and second.
Mr. Chair, I just want to let the board know as well that the, if you approve this license, which it looks like you will, it then goes to the ABCC for confirming of that license being transferred, and no alcohol can be served at that time, until it comes back, usually in a couple of weeks. But I just wanted you guys to be aware, that's all.
As long as the applicant knows that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hearing no discussion, roll call, vote, Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom? Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion's unanimous and is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Congratulations. Hopefully, if everything will go well.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to ask Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission, Christie Senatori, to come forward for an update on the Cape Cod Commission.
Hi, Christie, you can just put your hand down. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Good evening, it's nice to see you all, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight, I will be brief, I know you have a lengthy agenda, but I did just want to share some brief updates from the Cape Cod Commission. As you know, I'm Christie Senatori, I'm the executive director at the commission, I'm joined here this evening by Sarah Colvin, who's our communications manager in the back, and then Ernie Vergilio, who you all know, who we refer to very kindly as the dean of the Cape Cod Commission. And I was doing the math today, and I believe that this is his 25th year as an appointed representative on the Cape Cod Commission. And I can't thank Ernie enough for his dedication, his hard work, and his ability to make the really hard decisions when he needs to. So I want to give Ernie an opportunity to say a few remarks as well, but I want to appreciate, appreciate Ernie's dedication to the Cape Cod Commission, and then also, of course, recognize your select board chair, David Whedon, who's also a member of the Cape Cod Commission for his hard work. So I did just share with you a copy of our year-end review from 2022. I do want to emphasize that this isn't a comprehensive look at all of the work that we've done at the commission, but certainly a high-level overview of some of the highlights. And tonight, I wanted to just focus our efforts in three different areas, talking a little bit about water quality, you've already discussed that a little bit tonight, talking about coastal resiliency and climate change, and then a focus on housing. So in terms of water quality, as you know, and as you have also committed to making progress on water quality, addressing some of our nitrogen impacts in our marine estuaries and abeyments is critical, there's been a lot of progress made, and as you know, the commission provides administrative and technical support to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board. And we're very excited to bring Michaela Wyman Columbo onto our next meeting, so we welcome you to the board. Just last year alone, the Water Protection Fund awarded $28 million in grants, in subsidies to water quality projects across the region, and nearly $100 million since its inception to date. So that is a significant investment in water quality. We're pleased to see that Mashpee has been awarded a contingent commitment of about $12.8 million, and I know you're on the draft IUP for this year, so certainly progress being made towards funding and financing a lot of these significant projects. In terms of water quality, we're also pleased to commence work on our freshwater initiative, so much of the focus has certainly been on our marine estuaries and abeyments, and it's time to take a look at our freshwater lakes and ponds. Last year, we issued an update to our pond and lake atlas, where we're really providing an important look at some of the baseline data and information established through the atlas, and really kicking off of our freshwater initiative. Of our 890 freshwater ponds and lakes across the region, almost only 10% of those are actually monitored. And that limited availability of data really does impact our ability to gather a clear understanding of water quality in our ponds and lakes and our pond health. So the freshwater initiative that we have recently kicked off is going to really give us a better understanding of pond health, but more importantly, will set us up to identify and implement pond management strategies. So we'll be working with a number of local pond organizations across the Cape municipalities, a lot of the leaders across the region and other organizations to really put a plan together that makes sense for Cape Cod, and identify some of these management strategies that make sense. As it relates to climate change and coastal resiliency, certainly this has been the focus of our work for some time, and we're continuing to implement our climate action plan that we developed about a year and a half ago or so. As we speak, we will have initiated our low-lying roads project in all 15 Cape towns, so we'll certainly have a better understanding of our more vulnerable infrastructure as it relates to coastal resiliency. We've also developed a number of model bylaws and other resources for a lot of our local communities as we work to provide local guidance to some of the towns interested in moving more coastal resiliency and climate action initiatives forward. Some of these local bylaws incorporate electric vehicle charging infrastructure, looking at large-scale solar potential developments, as well as looking at design guidelines in the floodplain. So those are certainly areas where the commission has been playing a role, and will continue to hopefully play a significant role in helping the communities. Last year, we also held our second round of climate ambassadors, our climate ambassador program, where we have high school students from across the Cape participating in, engaging in discussion and dialogue around climate change impacts, mitigation and resiliency and adaptation strategies, and really bringing that information back. And we had two students from Mashpee participate in our last, our last round of programming, which was great. And so the last thing I just want to mention briefly is the work that we're doing on housing, and you may or may not know that we have begun work on a regional housing strategy, so we're really looking to address housing supply, affordability, and availability, looking at different areas across the Cape that are appropriate for housing development, looking at developing and creating policies that are appropriate for Cape Cod. The median sales price for a single-family home was around $690,000 at the end of last year. That would require an income of $210,000, which is significantly more than the average, the median annual income of the Cape residents, which is $82,000. So this, combined with the lack of available housing to the market, the lack of diversity in the market, as well as the prevalence of second homes, really does make it affordable housing, attainable housing, very challenging here on the Cape. This is only getting further and further out of reach, so the need to address housing, the need to put together a regional housing strategy is critical. As part of that regional housing strategy, we're developing baseline data and information, so I also shared with you a housing profile for the town of Mashpee. We had an opportunity to meet with some of your staff and dive into some of the details in that housing, in that housing profile, we also have developed one for the Cape as a whole, and so that's something that will help us as we really set forward some of the strategies that we'll be looking to implement. We're also looking to embark on a robust stakeholder process, so we'll be looking, now that we've met with the 15 communities, we'll be working with a larger group of stakeholders and organizations to really not only talk about the specific challenges that the communities are facing, but identify opportunities in areas where we can consider local and regional strategies, and really opportunities where we, as a Cape, can leverage some of the resources that we have and attract more resources from off Cape. So those are like the three fairly main critical areas I wanted to dive into in a little bit of detail. We did hold a One Cape Conference last year, last summer, I know many of you were in attendance, we are gonna be doing the same thing this summer, and so I'll look forward to sharing some details as we develop those over the course of the next couple of months. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but I did just want to give Ernie a chance to say a few words if he wants to.
First of all, thank you, Christie, those very nice words. I'd just like you to know how proud I am over the 25 years of Christie and staff. We have the best staff you can imagine, in every area of expertise, and I'm so proud of them and have been for all these years. It makes it so much easier for a commissioner to understand a subject with the staff and the way they compile the information, and how necessary it is to make those tough decisions that we make at the Cape Cod Commission. But Christie, you've been great, and I'd like to thank the board of selectmen for reappointing me over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vergilio. Does anyone, any members of the board have any questions or comments or concerns?
Appreciate the continued, great work.
For me, you know, the water quality issue, I attended the One Cape Summit, a lot of good information. You know, for me, I do hope that we take a close look at environmental, the water quality issues, and, you know, for me, I feel like Mashpee should be listed as an environmental justice community, only because the way, the formula in which they establish environmental justice communities, you know, it's not a minority community. But when you look at the town of Mashpee from all other factors, based on environment, we have two bays that are becoming eutrophic, our rivers and streams are impeded, our freshwater bodies are impeded, and there's even furor chemicals in some of the rivers and streams, surface waters. Additional testing needs to be done on the lakes and ponds to determine whether or not there's furor chemicals in those. So from an environmental, solely environmental aspect, you know, I feel as though the town of Mashpee should, in its entirety, be listed as an environmental justice community, and I didn't know if the commission could, had any position on that, or recommendations towards that.
So certainly, that is a designation made by others, primarily at the state level and other places, so not something that would run through the commission necessarily. That being said, we do interact with the data that's underlying a lot of the, these designations. So, and I think you're making some very valid points, and I think that there's an opportunity to revisit some of the areas that are designated, and they, I know they're doing this from time to time, and changing regulations accordingly. What I will say is, we are trying to make sure that we incorporate equity considerations into all of our planning, whether it's looking at climate change and incorporating equity considerations into that, regional planning, housing planning, so there are other opportunities as well. It's also having an impact on our regulatory program, so looking at even different environmental considerations in EJ areas. So I certainly will take your comments back, and certainly happy to kind of facilitate further dialogue with those officials that would have more to do with making those mapping decisions.
The other item I wanted to touch on was the model bylaw to improve access to electric vehicle charging infrastructure. You know, it's sitting on some of the subcommittees and things, you know, I do feel as though the commission should stake a firm stance on mandating and solar and other forms of renewables into building designs when considering DRIs. You know, I don't know where all this energy is gonna come from to fully allow for the transition of EVs from fossil fuel propulsion to EVs, if we don't start building, you know, mandating rooftop solar, solar canopies on all projects moving forward. To try to offset and counteract the clearing of wildlife habitat areas purely for a financial reason, you know, I don't see it as green energy if we're cutting down forests and trees that have natural carbon sequestration variables. And so, you know, I didn't know if the commission is taking any kind of action towards that direction.
So it's a good question, and yes, as part of our housing, regional housing strategy, we have a number of elements, I didn't go into the detail on all of those, but one of the pieces there is a series of design guidelines that would be incorporating net zero elements, and so that's, I think, really gonna start getting at the questions that you're asking about how projects may need to consider incorporating solar or other types of renewable energy into their designs by, as a matter of course, so something that we can consider as part of that. We also have a chance to take a look at the regional policy plan next year, it's up for, it's a five-year update already, I know. So I do think there's opportunities there to look at some of the climate considerations and see if there's opportunities to change some of the regulations.
And is the commission pursuing or encouraging the state, using its political influence to try to ask the, get the state to go after more infrastructure funding through the infrastructure bills or anything like that, that would bring funding to the region as far as wastewater, coastal climate adaptation, stormwater controls, any of those types of earmarks that are found within, even the broadband and internet, I think bringing fiber to the Cape would definitely promote more economic development opportunities for businesses that rely heavily on a robust bandwidth on the internet? And, you know, is the commission taking anything on that front?
Yes. So certainly wherever we can identify opportunities for the Cape to attract resources, we're certainly looking to do that, and a lot of the plans, planning that we're doing now is setting the Cape up to be in a position to really leverage some of those additional funding opportunities. As it relates to broadband, we actually just received funding through the county, Barstow County's ARPA, funding to do a broadband needs assessment, so that is something that we'll be initiating over the next couple of months, which will give us a better understanding of where some of the gaps are in terms of broadband service and access is also equally important, which will really give us a better opportunity to, again, leverage funding, once we know where our needs are, to really be able to say, where can the state or others be helpful in addressing some of the gaps that we do have in service? So yes, that's definitely a critical component of something that we identified as a need and went after some funding for, and we're successful in getting that ARPA grant.
It would be great if they pursued some, you know, additional fiber backbone, just to increase the capacity. just to increase the capacity. The, the housing initiative, you know, those numbers are troubling. Not sure, I look forward to looking at the various strategies and reading, reading over the materials presented for the town of Mashpee. You know, the rates, the, the sale price is raising three times the average weekly wages. That's, that's troubling because it's just gotten further and further out of reach, especially for a town like Mashpee where we're, you know, not meeting the 10% affordable inventory stock. Those are just some highlights that I kind of picked up on with the materials provided. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
I do.
Yes, Tom.
I'll be brief. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
I meant the last year, there was a situation, I think it was during the summer months, but there was always the, the Cape Cod was almost in a drought situation. They were going to, thinking of working with the, there was no, the water was running out, bottom line, and nobody knew what to do. They, they did a presentation at the assembly. I can't remember the full amount, but what concerned me was that what are we doing to prevent that from happening again? Because all we're doing is adding more properties, more buildings, more homes onto that single source aquifer. How do we prevent that? I mean, are, are we going to bring land, water in from the, across the canal? Is there anything being done to help to eliminate that? Because if we're just letting it go and let Mother Nature allow for more rain, with the rate of expansion and growth on Cape Cod, we're going to have that happen again. It's guaranteed it's going to happen. Is there anything that you know of that is, is being done?
Well, so certainly, I'm not a hydrologist, so I don't want to pretend that I am, but Tim Passakarnas on our Water Resources staff was the one that made the presentation to the assembly and the, and the county commissioners a few times during some of those drought conditions. Thankfully, it, it did get better. But certainly, as we look at future development on the Cape, it's not necessarily that we're adding significant inventory in, but more so looking at redevelopment opportunities, so really trying to be respectful of the environmental concerns and considerations as well. I think there's probably a whole lot more that we could, I can share with you that I'm happy to follow up with you afterwards. I want to connect with Tim and see what else he might want to share, too.
Yeah, it might be as simple as irrigation systems are not allowed, you know, with, you know, groundwater is one thing.
Yeah, and a lot of those are local decisions, and local, local towns are making certain decisions there, but...
But they affect all of Cape Cod.
I think, I think Tom brings up a good point, and I remember asking, I think during the last regional policy plan review, you know, has, has the commission developed a formula to determine max buildout and based on what the aquifer can supply? And, you know, I think what we need to take into consideration as we look at something like that is also the displacement of water with town water, directing water, you know, they're not on wells within the homesteads. You know, you're pulling from particular areas, and how is that replenished based on watersheds? As we transition over to wastewater infrastructure, you're going to have further displacement of watershed. It's not, you know, the watershed's not in its natural state, so you're going to see a shift in some of the water tables as a result of that development. And so how, how are we planning for that moving forward?
Yeah, and, and so we have conducted some buildouts. It, of course, is reliant on zoning, so there's, you know, there's a lot of variables there. If zoning were to change, it certainly would potentially change different buildout scenarios. But certainly, this is something that we do every day in looking at potential planning opportunities in, in different communities as we look at the housing crisis, as we look at making sure we're continuing to protect the environment at the same time. So all really valid points and things that we will continue to, to make sure that we're taking into consideration as we move forward with our planning.
As Ernie said, you know, the staff is very capable. They have the best of the best down there. I'm fully confident that they'll, you know, come back with good information. Thank you.
One, one simple question, and the, we talk about affordable housing, and I really get bothered by affordable housing because of the cost and there's, I often think that are they looking at cluster developments for affordable homes, single-family affordable homes? Just setbacks maybe not as great as it might be in a, in different areas, different, different developments. And we just, if you can squeeze an extra lot or two out of a property that's being developed, you know, end up with 17 homes instead of 15 homes, that, that could help greatly. It means, it makes a big difference. Have they looked at that, or they, I don't know what the standards are and the setbacks, or do they meet all of the requirements for the town?
Yeah, so it's another really good question, and we're looking at everything and looking at areas where you can have more density and you've got the appropriate infrastructure in place, and it makes sense in some of these cases to really be able to provide more units. We, we have a lack of diversity in, in the housing typology that we have on the Cape. 82% of our housing stock is single-family homes. So there's very little other types of housing, and so that's really where we can potentially focus our efforts, too. So we're looking at all those things. I think a lot of those options and opportunities are on the table. We're also doing a comprehensive zoning analysis across the Cape to get a better sense of what's allowed currently and where we might want to potentially suggest that some changes could be made to allow for more, more responsible development in areas that can accommodate that kind of density.
I figured as much. I figured you'd be on top of it. It's just a matter of, you know, how long things take and, you know, how much opportunity do we have we missed. But, um, thank you, I appreciate it.
On, on Tom's point, you know, I think he brings up a good point there as well. I would just, I guess, I'm a little more opposed to the cluster development. Alternatively, though, looking at and incentivizing and looking at various funding mechanisms that would incentivize or provide benefit to homeowners doing ADU. You know, if there's infrastructure there to put a accessory dwelling unit on a property, you know, from my understanding, there, a large part of the need is one and two-bedroom family structures, kind of small, modest homes like you find in an apartment complex. But if we could spread that amount out within the region through accessory dwelling units, I think that might be a way where you're not looking to do large-scale projects. You can kind of do more micro projects to address the situation.
Yeah, that's definitely one of the options that should be on the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristi.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, both of you. Always a pleasure to see you.
You, too.
Next, we have our wastewater engineer, Ray Jack. If you'd come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And it is actually a beautiful evening. It could be worse, let me put it that way. It's been a while since I've given the board an update on the projects because there are actually three projects that we'll be talking about. The wastewater plant itself, which is Contract One. Contract Two is the upper reach above north of 28 for the collection system, and then south of 28 down to Yardham Drive is the Contract Three area. So I will try to actually be brief, but I don't quite know how it's going to go. It's been a while. Okay, so we'll start out with the groundbreaking, and this report is for the January period. So financially, I always do the monthly reports that are going to be about three weeks into the next month, and that's about where we are now. But that's, that's what it takes to get all of the finances on the books and get the bills paid so that I can present the information so you have a good, solid picture of what the financial condition is. So here we have, from left to right, you have Al Hall, who is a sewer commissioner, former town planner, Tom Fadala, and also sewer commissioner. Dave Reden, who is the current Board of Selectmen Chair. Kayla Colombo, our most recent addition to the board. Phyllis Sprout, who is a sewer commission member. John Lyons, he's the former chairman and current sewer commission member. And Meredith Harris, who is also a member of the sewer commission. So this was taken at the wastewater plant site. This is just another one of, another photo. These photos I took, these were not the newspaper photos. And after I downloaded these, I found this somewhat interesting, so that's why I put this second photo of the members up there that were doing the groundbreaking. If you look right here, you'll see that this is Meredith, and she's got her hand up. She's talking to everybody, and I don't know what she's saying, but it's important because she's very animated about it. But nonetheless, then of course, down here, we have the town manager, Mr. Collins. He was present there as well. So this is the project area, and I hope this is the last time you have to see this map, only because it is not as clear as I would like it to be for presentation purposes. But this includes the entirety of the sewer service area, north and south. For the next presentation, I would hope to have this broken into two separate maps, one north, one sap, south, and have it based on a parcel map. So with a parcel map, you'll be able to see not only the road and hopefully the road names, but as well as the individual parcels that have the sewer lateral installed up to the property line. So we'll start up here in the northern area first. This is Route 28, north and south. So this area up here is Contract Number Two. Here you have Carlton, which is already done as far as the main is going. This is Sewell, and the main has already been installed on Sewell, but that wasn't done in January, that was actually done in February. This is Swain, the main's in on Swain. This area over here is Sea Oaks, and they're currently coming right off of Carlton here. That main's already in, and they're working in this wooded area right in here at the present time. On the southern side, down here, we have Simon's Narrows. Now, Simon's Narrows actually goes down further, but this is the terminus of the sewer collection area right here. It's about 1,100 feet from Mashpee Neck Road, so that main's already in. The services will be going in probably during March. Then right here, you see a black dot. That little black dot right there is the lift station on Mashpee Neck Road. So the main was installed after Simon's Narrows. The main was installed from Simon's Narrows up to the lift station, and during the month of February, they continued on. And right now, they're up here at Port Hole Drive. The goal is, within the next month, is to make it up to Quiddicwicit up here. And I'll be showing you a couple of pictures of that main that is going in. It's not just one main, it's actually two mains, and I think you'll understand it a bit better once we get to some of those pictures there. This is the plant site today. Matter of fact, it was the other day when I took these photos. So this is just showing you where it is. It doesn't look like it, but in this photo here, that is actually a hole, a big hole in the ground. That's where the process building is going to go. It's presently about 10 feet deep. During March is when you would expect to see construction in that particular area. This is some of the underground piping that has to go in. So over here, we have ductile iron pipe. The center photo here is 18-inch SDR 35 pipe. SDR 35, it stands for standard dimension ratio pipe. It's a thicker wall and more flexible than conventional Schedule 40, which most people know. So this is the type you would typically use in wastewater, and believe it or not, that's why the color is green, because green is a color that's reserved for wastewater, blue is water, yellow is gas. So on the north side, this is just about a 16, 16-foot-deep trench where they're installing the main, and that was on Carlton Road because that's where the project started. So Carlton's complete from Asher's all the way up to the end. The connection for the treatment plant was put on that main. Connection for Asher's apartments was put there. Connection for Sea Oaks came off of Carlton as well. Then all the service connections for the sewer laterals on Carlton are complete. The eight-inch main, as well as the service connections on Swain, are complete. The eight-inch main's done on Sewell, and the service connections are done on Sewell. Currently, they're working at the end of Sewell with a low-pressure main. So this is the area down south. The eight-inch main that's on Simon's Narrows is complete. 12-inch main is what they're working on now. And this right here is the lift station site, that black dot that we were talking about. You can see where the fence, the wooden fence is in the front. The fence was removed, the lot was partially cleared, and that's where a lift station is going to go to push the wastewater up to the plant. And I'll be talking about lift stations again in a minute, too, because I always have a comment about that. But anyway, so some of the materials and equipment, here you have a main installation where they're putting in a manhole, and you see the tubes coming out of the hole, that's for testing purposes, that are testing that particular manhole there. These are the manholes by the side of the road. I'm sure you've seen quite a few of them around town now. And then you have the 12-inch main, which was delivered on-site. These are some of the other materials that are in use, and you have the manhole being installed up on top. Chimneys is a term that most people aren't familiar with, but when you have mains that are 15, 17 feet deep, and you're going to see another main I'll be talking about tonight is 17 feet deep. When you're down that deep, the lateral line going to a house or a building is not that stable, so these concrete structures right here are known as chimneys. There's actually a groove in the bottom of them, and they fit over the pipe, and then you can stack some of these other cement connections here on top to raise the level of the sewer connection so that it's not that deep at the property line as well. Serves two purposes. It provides structural integrity, the service connection, and it raises it up. The material stocking area down here, this is Eversource property right off of Orchard. You see a lot of their trucks there on a regular basis. That's where the transformers are, so it's a power station, and they're allowing us to use this area down here for storage of materials. This is just a couple of photos of Carlton when the mains were going in. That was a deep main on Carlton, so it was about anywhere from 12 to 15 feet as a rule. This on the right-hand side is showing you a manhole going in, and this is the main being inserted into the manhole. There's a rubber fitting right there that makes it a watertight seal. And then around the edge of the manhole on top lip here, there's a gasket that goes into that before the other section is attached to it to make that a watertight seal as well. Once the manhole is constructed, then they do a test leak-down test on it to make sure that it is watertight. So this is showing you the main on Mashpee Neck Road. It's a dual-main installation, so the green pipe is the SDR 35 for gravity. Here, you see a fitting for a service connection, and that's because this main's relatively shallow, as mains go. Over here, you see SDR, SDR 21 pipe, which is a thicker wall pipe but has more flexibility. That's the pressure pipe or the force main that comes off of the lift station. And then this was preparing to set a manhole on Mashpee Neck. So this individual over here, what he's doing is he's actually painting, you see a little bit of red down the bottom. He's going to paint a circle. This is stone placed at the bottom for support for the manhole. He'll place a red circle down there so they know exactly where to place the manhole when they start dropping it down. So on Swain, these are some of the service connections and how they look. This right here, you can see just a little bit of white. So this is where it came off the main, ran up into the property line. You see the bushes here on the owner's property, and that's a fitting that brings it vertically up. So it'll be another pipe that will come off the top of that and come up to the surface with a cleanout. This is where the main is. So this is what a service connection looks like at the main. You can't see the main, but the main's running down here. Then the service connection fitting is in the main, and then these two fittings go on top of it in order to adjust it so you can put it up to the house. And this is what it looks like when it's done. So here, the installation is complete, and everything's been covered over. And up here, we see the stake, there's a little stake right there. That's the terminus of the lateral connection. That's where the homeowner would connect into it. Just on the temporary, temporary paving that's going in on all of the roads, they do that on Thursday in all the paved areas, wherever they're working. And then usually in the spring and/or the summer, after the trench is sufficiently settled... And then usually in the spring and/or the summer, after the trench is sufficiently settled, has to be at least three months, that's when we consider the permanent paving. On the right-hand side over here, this is just trying to show what it's like trying to get around some of the existing utilities. This is a gas line going across where they want to trench for the main. They're going to be putting a main this way. And they have to dig this up first. Over here is a water main that they're trying to avoid. You can see the blue down there. So they have to avoid these utilities all the time on just about every street. So it just makes construction a little slower. Now everybody's heard about these. These are lift stations. Some people call them pump stations. They're really not, and I'll show you why. It's called a lift station in just a moment. But this is what a typical lift station, smaller station building would look like. And when I get to the wet well over here, that's a big hole in the ground with a tank. And that tank is not inside a building, it's actually over here. This is the wet well. So this is what you see on the surface of a lift station. And then this goes below the surface over here, that's a pump down at the bottom, and that's another pump down at the bottom here. Those are known as submersible pumps. So they take the wastewater from that lift station as it starts to fill up, and then it pushes it up, these pipes that are in the back, brings it up to the surface, pushes it under pressure either to another main or all the way to the treatment plant coming on where it goes. These right here, they're cables that are hanging down, they have little floats on them. So those are on and off floats for the pumps. They tell it when to come on and when to shut off. Asher's Apartment, I took this photo. I happen to like it. I think it's a very nice shot. This is going to be the biggest single user in the sewer service area of all of them. Their system's rated for 8,000 gallons a day, consists of 56 one-bedroom units, and it's directly across from where the plant's going to be located. There are six graphs similar to this. There's three of each. There's three that are statistical and three that are graphics. And I would strongly urge to pay close attention to them. This is your financial condition on a rolling basis. So here is the statistical information for each of the respective contracts, starting out with contract one. The original contract value based on the bid was 27,905, but we adjusted the contract value by 1.597 million down at the bottom. And that was a change order so that we can get all of the tankage in for the capacity of the plant. So we already did that, but it adjusts the contract value from 27 to 29 million. As of January, the project's considered 4.3% complete and we paid out 1.26 million. Now on this percentage, there's two ways to report this. You can do it based on time, or you can do it based on project completion. And I've chosen to do it on project completion. So bottom line is, the 4.3% means the 1.262 is divided by the 29 million, so it's based on the project value, all right? And I'll explain that on the next one, why I do it that way. So the notice to proceed was issued on October 3rd, 790 days till project completion. There are 670 days remaining as of the end of January. Final completion scheduled for December 1st next year. Startup officially is scheduled for October 2nd, but I do want to explain something to you here. Every month when we pay a bill for the contractors, doesn't matter if it's the treatment plant and/or the street, we retain 5% of the value of whatever it is they're putting in that month. So when you're into a $29 million contract, $10 million contract, that's a lot of money as the months start to go on. You'll hit a point in the contract known as substantial completion. When you, when you get to that point, it means that theoretically you can use it for what it was intended. So this is a treatment plant. Literally, it has to be capable of taking wastewater flow. So maybe it won't be painted. It might have the tires on it or something like that. But if you can use it for its intended purpose, the contractor has achieved substantial completion. At that moment, all of the retainage that we have held over that whole two-year period is released in a lump sum. It is in the contractor's best interest to get a contract done as quickly as possible in order to get that to happen. So it's to their benefit as well as ours. So change order here was 1.5 million and that was for the additional tankage. These charts here, I could, I'm going to take a $10 million project for an example this evening. I want you to think about these lines. Put three lines up here. You have the original budget, that was based on what the bid was. That was 27.92 million on this contract. Then you have the adjusted budget, which is whatever change orders are incurred, the budget's going to go up. So it's 29.5 million. And then you have what we actually pay on a monthly basis, in this case, 1.26 million. You notice that those lines are close together, relatively close. And they shouldn't diverge too much. And if they do, it's telling everybody that there's a problem. Now, I've seen this in my career. So what I'm going to express to you here, I could stand here and we'll take this $10 million project again. If we had just spent 9,999,999 dollars and 99 cents, I could actually stand here that evening and tell you with a straight face, the project is under budget. But it's only half-complete. But you're broke. That's actually happened on government projects, just that way. They were presented as being under-budget. There's a difference between under-budget and within the budget. Within the budget means the money you're spending versus the value of the project should stay fairly close together throughout the life of the project, all right? So this is dangerous for me, all right? Because I'm showing you here, this is how towns lose control of a contract, if these lines start to materially diverge. And we already have a divergence tonight. I'll show it in a minute. So this is contract two, which is the north construction contract. Original value and adjusted value are the same, 5,024,000, and that's because there weren't any change orders. As of January, it's 19.6% complete. We've already paid out 985,000. 679 days for total completion as of October 3rd, 559 days remaining. Theoretical completion for the northern area, because it's relatively small, is August 12th of next year. The mains will be in by July 4th, and there are no potential change orders. So this is the one that has a divergence already, but this is a good divergence. And the only reason this one's good, you're just starting the project and they're ahead of schedule. And they've had to order a lot of material in order to do that. So the current pay values that we're giving them is based on all of the materials that they're ordering for the project. So that line will start to, that line will start to level out with the other lines over time as they go, as they get caught up. So this is the southern area. It's almost twice the size of the northern area, so it's 9.8 million. Both values are the same because there's no change orders on it yet. In January, 3.6% completes, so they got a slow start. Only paid 354,000. 670 days out of 790 remaining. This is supposed to be completed on December 1st. Main completion is supposed to be November 1st, and presently no change orders. These are the same three lines. You can't see the blue line that well, only because there weren't any change orders, so the values are the same on the original budget as well as the adjusted. And then we have the actual payments out there. So for March, February, March coming up, and summer, this is all almost done already. So at the wastewater plant itself, you see the process tanks, foundations and underground piping will have to go in. That means you have to dig some really big holes, which they are already doing. So those tanks and foundations and piping will start going in next month. For north, I went over all the mains here. Right down at the bottom, we've got the Route 28 mains. And before this presentation's over, I'm going to get into that. And I've already covered Simon's Narrows as well as the Mashpee Neck Road main, because both of those are to be completed during the month of March. The SRF update, that's the state revolving fund. The zero-interest loan was actually approved this January. It took them a while to approve the zero-interest component on it for the 54 million. The draft intended use plan was released in December. Last August, we had requested 12 million from the state under this program. And August is the deadline for submitting those applications. So they had several months to review it. Can you have a whole list of all the towns that are going to be on there? Mashpee is one of the towns that made the list. However, the final IUP or intended use plan list has not yet been released, and it's always released in January. I don't know what their holdup is. This is the end of February and I still haven't seen it. But it will come out. It has to come out shortly because this is also going to be a Maytown meaning article, all right? The 12 million, 12 million dollars. And that's predominantly, the 12 million here is predominantly for doing the roads that were withheld on the original bid because it was insufficient funding. That was another picture I took, that was the Mashpee River. And this slide was in anticipation of a boat tour that I had taken. And Ashley, DNR director, as well as Bobby, the harbor master, were very gracious in taking me on this tour. The other gentleman that you see here in the orange cap on the bottom is John, and he was taking samples that day. So the other pictures you saw of the Mashpee River were pretty. These are not so pretty. And this is an example of what should not be. So Ashley took a boat hook and put it in the water. This is the muck that came up. I got to go back to that one. I hit the wrong button. The muck that had come up on it, she has a name for this. She says it's mayonnaisey. Never heard of it, but it sounded pretty good and it's certainly appropriate. The black that you see in the water here is just from her sticking the boat hook into the bottom of the river there. That's not supposed to be. This is not a healthy environment on a river bottom. River bottoms are supposed to be sandy. So here, just stirring an oar brings up the silt and the muck. This is the pond shore. So you can see here, it's not very clear. There are actually, right here it's less than a foot deep and you can barely see there's a couple of stones down at the bottom. It's not a healthy environment. This was late in the season, so that was not an algae bloom that you're looking at. This one here, since I like pictures, I love this picture, I did not take it. This picture is one of your own. Mr. John Lyons, or Joe Lyons, who's on the Sewer Commission. This was where he lives and he took that sunset and I really loved it and he didn't mind if I used it on this. Now, this I'm going to try to go over very briefly, because if you're going to talk about problems, then logic says it's nice if you have solutions. So this is one of them. This was something that I had worked on when I was still working in Falmouth. I worked closely with Mashpee and a number of entities related to Mashpee on this, but it was initiated by the Falmouth Riding Gun Club. It's the Child River Restoration. 3 million is only a piece of what it actually cost. It went higher than that, but they were very, very good on getting state and federal funding from a lot of different entities. So this was completed back in August of '21. It included Falmouth, Mashpee, and a host of others. I'll show you in a minute. They removed an old earthen dam along the river. Culvert replacement, which was under the Blacksmith Shop Road, replaced the failed fish ladder. And these two cranberry bogs, Farley and Garner, were restored to their natural habitat. They created four new ponds. And the purpose was to restore, restore the brook trout and the American eel. And at the very end of this presentation, I have a feature film presentation that's about 30 seconds long to show you what the result of this was, and I think you'll be impressed. So here, this was the old culvert that was being replaced under the road. You can see it's all clogged up inside with boulders and debris. That's more close-up shot of what it looked like. This is the new culvert, it's a box culvert, that was going to be going in under the road. And that's when it was installed where the roadway is. And then you have the concrete wing walls on both sides that were installed on the front and back portions. So I didn't expect anybody to read this, and I didn't want to keep you here all night, but I did highlight Mashpee and Falmouth as the two communities that work well together on this. But you can see that there were a lot of partners apart under this partnership, working to get that done. So this was the Farley bog then, before they did it. And that's now. This was the Garner bog then. And that's now. And you can see how the river has been rechanneled all around it. This was the old culvert then. And now. So you can see, that's the culvert down there with its wing walls that was replaced. And of course, the river was rechanneled. And a lot of this looks like debris and sticks. Okay, these were logs that were used for rechanneling the river.
Let me ask you this, just to interrupt your flow. Is that where the, it was a seal that came upriver, was on the commercial side of the Route 28?
That I don't remember.
Yeah, I knew people that went down to see it. There was a, there was a seal and it came up the stream.
Okay. That one I wasn't aware of. This here is where that little 30-second feature film would be, but I can't play it right now. I'm going to have to wait until I get to the end of the presentation, because it won't let me play it as an embedded item in here. So I'm going to push through it now. I have to bring it up on YouTube right at the end of the presentation, but it's worth, Come on. Okay. Route 28 detour. We are presently in the process of applying for state permit for Route 28 construction. There is a 1,300-foot distance that we'll need to cover. And the red line here on Route 28, here you have Route 28. And this is Orchard. And this is Quiniquissette. And this is Route 28 down toward Rotary, just to give you your bearings here. So the area of construction is this area here, that red line that exists right there. And High Sacum is right here, and that's where a force main is going to be going up High Sacum. So that's the terminus of this main. But what we're doing here is a detour as opposed to trying to maintain a one-lane flow of traffic. And as you're going to see in a minute, it's really impossible to do that. But this is by far the safest approach for doing construction like this. It's safer for the detail officers, it's safer for the pedestrians and vehicular traffic, and it's safer for the contractors as well. So I'm going to run this through. This is the zone that we're talking about here in blue. And then down here on the left-hand corner, you're going to see that this is where the detail, the detour would start for eastbound traffic. They would turn off of 28 onto Quiniquissette, continue down Quiniquissette to Orchard, then they'd make a left on Orchard, go back up to 28, and then ultimately just make a right and head on there Mary Way. Then for the westbound traffic off of 28, they would make a right-hand turn onto Asher's path. Then they would proceed down Asher's to Meeting House, take a left on Meeting House, go back to 28, and then make a right and be back on 28. There are going to be three detail officers present. So the first one's going to be up at Orchard and 28. Another one will be present at Asher's and Meeting House. And third one will be down directing traffic going east on 28 and Quiniquissette. There's going to be a variable message board, or that roadside message board that everybody sees periodically. That's going to be mile and a half, two miles up the road, letting people know that there's detour up ahead. And then down on the east side is going to be another one down by the Rotary. So adjacent communities would also be notified. So in this case, Falmouth, Barnstable, and what have you, would all be notified of this. So in this case, Falmouth, Barnstable, and what have you would all be notified of this. The duration, there's only a limited period of time that the town has with the state in order to work on the state highway. So in this case, that timeline is April and May. So we're applying for the full permit period, that whole time. But I expect actual construction for this detour to be in the range of four weeks, five at the outside. And there are also nine services that have to be installed on the north side of 28 up here. Just to let you know, this main is going to be running right down the middle of the road. And on the south side here is a reinforced concrete drainage pipe. On the north side is a 10-inch gas main. And also on the north side is an 8-inch water main, all right, for the Mashpee Water District. So we have three major mains out there. I think probably the most sensitive is the gas main. Okay? But... And the hours on this detour would be 7:00 in the morning till 5:30 at night. And the reason for that is to get the extra hours in the day in order to reduce the amount of time that they're actually going to be out there. It takes a fair amount of time in the morning to start shutting down a state highway. And it takes a fair amount of time, much more time in the afternoon in order to ready it for the evening traffic, as well as, you know, take away the construction equipment and what have you. So... Were there any questions on that? Before I jump into... Believe me, you don't, and I've done a lot of construction activity on a lot of projects over the years. It doesn't get any better than this. This is as safe as it gets. When you're able to actually keep traffic moving, and this is a smooth flow of traffic on a continuous basis, nobody's sitting in line waiting for anything other than maybe up at the traffic light, but you'd have been waiting there anyway to begin with. And having a police detail officer there is valuable because they can override the traffic light. So they can control the traffic just to keep it moving. But this way, it is a continuous flow of traffic away from the hazardous area as opposed to trying to tie people up and trying to maintain that two-way traffic. Okay, so it doesn't get better than this.
One question is, your blue triangles, those are police officers?
Yes.
So I see you have, you know, the ones on 28 makes sense. Where I didn't see one on Quiniquissette, Ashers. Is it really necessary to have one at Meeting House and Ashers? I mean, Quiniquissette and Orchard, down in that corner, there doesn't, there isn't one reflected. But you do have one on, the primary roads make a lot of sense. The secondary roads, is there some sort of requirement to that one?
No, it's not a requirement on those. Now, especially up at Meeting House, because if you're actually sitting at that intersection, looking left, there's a slight curve. But it's sufficient enough that you can't clearly see the traffic that's going north. And now you're expected to cross that traffic and make a left. So one of the problems becomes the heavier truck traffic. All right, if a tractor trailer happens to go down there, they're gonna have a difficult time negotiating that bend in time. So that's why having a detail officer there is beneficial for the trucks. Trucks and buses and things like that.
And when do you plan to start this?
Tentatively, tentatively, right now, if all goes right, April 3rd. And I will say this, too. You have one of the best construction crews around out there. They are good. They are really good, especially on this.
That's great to know. So you're showing the main lines. What about the tie-in lines? Do they go in at the same time, or is that a separate installation?
No, they're gonna try to do all of the cross mains that they can at this time. That's why even on the lift station end out there, the main for the force main is gonna be installed at that time, as well as the service connections. And I said, there's only nine, and they're on the north side for the service connections as well. Then the only other disruption that you'll ever see after that is really going to be when it comes time to do the final paving on the road. And that'll take a day, maybe two.
Depending on the location, it's almost like it'll, it'll take up all of Route 28, would be removed and then replaced, and Orchard Road as well.
Right. And since we're in the middle, that's what it's going to be.
Which is a better job, but...
Well, generally speaking, you should try to get, from a cross-sectional area of a road, that usually determines where the various utilities are supposed to go. And the place that holds the center line is always the sewer main. Then water's on one side, gas is usually on the other. In this case, water and gas are both on the same side. Storm is on the lower side. And then the softer utilities, electric, cable, telephone, they usually go along the shoulders.
I have a question. So as I'm watching this, this is so clear. And I know residents have a lot of questions with regard to when this is starting, what the traffic will look like. And is, will this be available?
Yes.
Will it be available on the website with the frequently asked questions so that residents can go to this and understand?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, I'll be making, I'll be making this map available to the press, where hopefully that can get published at some point during the month of March. Also, the contractor will be delivering flyers to all of the homes and the vicinities. Then, as I indicated too, I will be notifying the adjacent towns once I have a firmer idea of what that timeframe is going to be. If it's gonna start on April 3rd, I have to be very definitive as to when it's gonna be to let them know.
I think just having them, residents, have a good idea of when it's starting.
Yes.
You know, although it's not etched in stone. We understand whether there are things that come up. But I think that would be really helpful for people.
Yes.
Thank you.
But let me say one thing. We'll get it on the website. We'll get it on Facebook. We'll get it to the press. And you're still gonna get calls saying, "What is going on?"
Yeah, but at, but at least we'll have a place to point, we'll be able to point people to it. We'll be able to look at it and be able to hopefully answer their questions.
Absolutely.
Is there a way to dedicate a specific email address to questions regarding the project so that maybe we can compile and...
I like that idea.
Synthesize comments concerned, be able to address comments and concerns at Town Meeting and any of the platforms. That might be helpful.
We'll check with IT and try to get that arranged.
Rodney Dodd-Collins.
Jake Cotton.
I will tell you, Ray, from a detour perspective, I commute to Hyannis. And it's nothing but detours constantly. And half the detours take you, you just guess. It's actually, this is, I mean, it's really simple. I mean, if there's, at the turns, if there's a detour sign with an arrow, you're done. I mean, it's, this doesn't get any easier. I've, I've been driving around Botswell, I'm like, I guess I'm just following traffic. So this, this is simple.
And believe it or not, normally for construction like this, I wouldn't be talking four to five weeks. I'd be talking six to eight, if we had to try to maintain traffic, if that was even possible.
No, that makes sense.
And unfortunately, the human condition says that you rubberneck when you go by something, whether it's an accident or a construction site. You have got to see what's going on. You should be watching the guy in front of you. But, you know, unfortunately, people have a tendency to wander, you know, with their eyes, and then their car wanders, and it becomes intrinsically dangerous to put them together. Little film, film flick? If I can get it, if I can get it to work now? I played with this this afternoon to try to get it to work, so... Oh, here we go. What happened to mouse? See, I knew something was gonna happen. There we go. It's actually worth it. It's only 30 seconds long, but the proof's in the pudding on this. I guess the fish are talking, but I don't have the volume up. That's a healthy substrate for a river. And obviously, you can see that it succeeded in its effort to bring the trout back. And at the very end, you're gonna see the culvert. See that? It's a continuous flow through that culvert, all right? To me, that was a really great success story for what I consider to be a fairly, you know, short amount of money, if you will. So if you're wondering what the effect of searing like this is on the ecosystem, this is a good example of the things you can start to expect. All right, it really does work. That was it. I don't know if that was too bad or not, but time-wise.
A great presentation.
Thank you. Very informative. Anyone else have any questions for our engineer?
Can I ask a couple? A couple just small questions. First of all, thank you so much, and thanks for ending on a hopeful note. When you're talking about the 12 million, how many more houses will that be?
Approximately 100.
Okay. And one thing I'm thinking people might ask about is you talked, you talked about the additional tankage that you put in for 1.6, I think, or somewhere around there. Can you just explain the benefits of that additional tankage?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. The plant as designed, you have the process building. And then, sitting on the north side of the process building, were a series of tanks, concrete tanks. Those are your process tanks, where the treatment is actually going to occur. They have an anoxic zone, aerobic zone, followed by an anoxic zone. And then the membrane react, membrane process is right at the end of that. So the membrane filter is right at the end of that process. So that is your treatment plant, so to speak. It was broken up under the original bid such that you were gonna get two tanks, which is equivalent to 120,000 gallons of flow. And then there were three more sets of two that constitute the rest of the plant. Those were considered alternates. So you could have gotten 50% more with another two tanks. That was one of the options. Or take that and the next set, which would have been the other four tanks. The logic here, and it's twofold. You have to ask yourself the fundamental question. These are deep tanks, a lot of concrete, a lot of rebar, a lot of process piping, and a lot of process. Is it gonna be cheaper now or later? And later meaning a year, two, five, right? It's gonna be much cheaper now by a factor of a million plus to be able to get it done now. So in being able to, and I really thank the town's financial wizards with respect to Craig and Dawn, and the town manager for being able to facilitate this. Because this is a very wise economic move, as well as an ecological move. Because now, you literally have 100% of the capacity the plant was designed for, which is 480,000 gallons. So it puts you in a position where you don't have to go back. And if you can imagine this second piece, forget about the savings and the cost. What's it gonna look like a year from now, two years from now? You're going in your brand-new plant and taking those big machines right down the side of that brand-new building to dig big holes to put more tanks in, and expecting a good outcome. Can it be done? Yes, it can. But it has a bad appearance. They, you just built it, now you're gonna dig it up. So I thought it was a very wise move.
And also risk factor too, if we had to dig.
Yes.
So it gives us more capacity, we're saving money, and we're not risking digging. Thank you.
Right. The one thing I did not do, just so that you are aware, the tanks are gonna be there, but there are headers that go in there, equipment like pumps and things of that nature for each of those tanks, because they're separate processes. Did not get the equipment. And the reason for that is that you could theoretically try to buy the equipment now, but then the warranties expire. All right? So now you got equipment sitting there that's not yet being used, and you're deliberately expiring your warranties. It doesn't make sense. You put those in, it's cost-effective to put those in as the time comes.
Excellent. You know, like I said, thank you for coming in and spending your evening preparing for this and bearing with us while we went through the other matters. And I wanna thank you for a really informative presentation.
Very well.
Great job.
Thank you.
The next ones will be shorter. I had to give you that little glimmer of hope there with Child River.
We're chipping away at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and approval of the following resignations and appointments. The first one, we have resignation from the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. Member-at-Lodge, term expires June 30th, 2023, Rachel Hicks. I'd accept a motion to, I'd accept a motion to accept the resignation from Rachel Hicks as presented with a letter of thanks.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? No? Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion passes. Next one, we have a request to reappoint or rescind the resignation of the Community Preservation, from the Community Preservation Act. Member-at-Lodge, term expires June 30th, 2023, Dawn Thayer. She had talked with the rest of the committee, and we kinda talked her into sticking around. There was a particular issue that was troubling her. And she's reconsidered. The full committee really values her input and expertise in the conversations. And so we're, we're in full support of her rejoining officially. So I'd accept a motion to approve.
That's great, I'll second that motion.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Carol?
Yes.
John?
Absolutely.
John?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And myself. Say yes as well, so that motion passes unanimously also. Moving on, we have a discussion on approval of the following temporary sign permits. It's the Mashpee Boosters Club Psychic Fair to be held on March 4th through March 12th. This is an annual event. Typically, the signs are allowed to stay up for one week, I believe. And I'd accept a motion to approve the Mashpee Boosters Club Psychic Fair sign.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on this? Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion passes. I'd accept a motion to approve the Master Gardener's Plant Sale signage as presented. That is going to be held on May 16th, 2023. And the sign can be posted through May 20th, '23.
Two more.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion passes unanimously. Communications and correspondence. Hearing none, old business, none, new business. Discussion and possible approval of the draft one of the May 1st, 2023 Special Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. Not sure how you guys wanna approach this. I was thinking maybe, you know, the first few pages, there's some numbers that we don't have yet. Town manager?
I do have one for you, Mr. Chair. I know that Mr. McManus is here, and I think he wants to withdraw.
Sure, if you wanna come forward.
If that's okay with you.
Mr. McManus? State your name and record for the...
Drew McManus, Town of Mashpee Conservation Agent and Herring Warden. So I'm putting in a request to withdraw and postpone the request for CPA funding for the Disc Golf Course from the May Town Meeting Warrant, and have it postponed to the October Town Meeting Warrant. The reasons for this request are threefold. First of all, that I think that, speaking from an optics standpoint, the agenda, the warrant for the May Town Meeting has a lot of large budgets and potentially contentious articles on, on the warrant. And I think that, speaking strictly from an optics standpoint... And I think that, speaking strictly from an optics standpoint, I don't think it's advantageous to have this go in conjunction or coincide with other warrant articles. Just my personal opinion. Secondly, I think that we can use this time, we, meaning the Cape Cod Disc Golf Club who's behind this proposal and the Recreation Department, to kind of do some community engagement when it comes to disc golf, hosting clinics, demonstrations, and things of that nature to the public to kind of educate. Because disc golf really is not a known entity as far as a recreational activity. In fact, there's a saying that goes around, it's the most popular sport nobody's ever heard of. So to take advantage of that time to do some community engagement, particularly with the Butters in that location. Third reason is, as some of you are familiar with this, this location for the disc golf course, it's 156 and 162 of Schumet Road. That parcel backs up to the Air National Guard Base, particularly the runway. And there were signs put up well within the boundary of the town parcel from the Air Force 102nd Fighter Wing, basically stating no trespassing beyond this point. So the signs were put on town property. I spoke to the town manager about this and subsequent to that, reached out to the Air Force to find out what the signs were posted for. And as we speculated, it was for a hunting incident that occurred a while back where I think some personnel from the base were hit with buckshot or a vehicle was hit with buckshot from a hunting incident. So they put up the signs, really that was the primary reason for it, although it doesn't say no hunting, it just says no trespassing. So I'm still in communication with the base. They do have, they're claiming they have an easement there, and they showed me a map highlighting the areas of the parcel that have an easement with the Air Force because, as I said, the runway is right there. So I don't think that's going to be an issue with this proposal because I think it's a height consideration with the runway easement. And nothing about the disc golf course is going to be taller than the existing trees. So I don't think this is going to be a problem moving forward, but it still requires clarification. And I don't want to leave any eyes on dotted tees crossed when it comes to this proposal. And that's something that we just need to iron out and clarify. So those are the three reasons I'm requesting a withdrawal from the May Town Meeting with the expectation this could be postponed and put on the October Town Meeting Warrant.
I can certainly understand those sets of being under pressure at this time.
Right.
And it'll probably take a while to get everything approved anyway. So I probably think you're right. And like you said, the spring is coming, your workload is going to be up there, so.
I've got a full agenda.
Yeah. I would accept your motion to.
I will take it into consideration. I think if we go through the CPC portion, try and get through that tonight and then leave some of the others, at least we're chipping away at it.
Yes, and I appreciate you taking them just because he's all set now and he can leave.
Yeah.
If you want to, you can stay if you'd like.
Thank you for coming in.
It's been a long day already, so that's fine. Just one quick note about Ray's presentation and the restoration that took place at Child's River, that really was an amazing project. The Film with Rod and Gun Club did a phenomenal job with that. And those species of brook trout, just so you know, they're known as salters. And they, they're a specific breed of species of brook trout that actually migrate from the upper reaches of river systems out to the estuary so they can actually tolerate brackish and fresh water. So they're a really exceptionally rare species. And it's amazing to see a project like this provide suitable habitat for such a rare species. Hope to see more of that moving forward, so.
I think we all are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I guess I jump forward to, you know, some of the numbers are missing on the first page.
A lot of them is missing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess the first one that looks like complete information is the article to see if the town, on page two, second paragraph from the top, from the bottom, to see if the town will vote to approve and transfer the sum of $101,450 from the ambulance reserve receipts account with said funds to be distributed as follows. $100,000 to the fire department overtime salary account and $1,450 to the Medicare expense account or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve? And what's the other word?
Recommend. And take any other action relating to.
No, when we go to.
It's prove and recommend?
Yes, recommend.
Prove and recommend.
Okay.
So you'd approve it for the warrant and then recommend passage to the legislative body?
Right.
I second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on this article? Hearing, hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So we take two votes?
Yes.
Motion to recommend.
No.
We just did approve and recommend.
I said approve and recommend.
Next one, on page three, top paragraph, the article is to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the Community Preservation Fund budget for appropriation reserve in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 44B, subsection 5, the sum of $378,080 for the purpose of funding the Quashna School Playground Improvement Project Phase Two at the site located at 150 Barnstable Road, Mashpee, identified on Assessors Map 67, parcel two, including necessary costs and expenses related to thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relating thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
I'll second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on that? Michaela?
I think it's certainly a really worthwhile project. I do wonder, too, at this time, where we're worried about budgets, if we should have Catherine come in and explain some of it to us. I certainly think that if we need to do any playground resurfacing to make the playground safer, we need to watch for fall, we need fall protection, we want to make it totally accessible. I mean, all of that is something that, I mean, I couldn't argue with. I'm wondering if, at this point in time, of the same, or one of the same reasons that Mr. McManus withdrew the disc golf proposal, I'm wondering if we could get more information, find out if part of this, we could amend it, so perhaps part of it could be approved, or the amended proposal could be approved. Or maybe she'll, when she comes in, if she could, she could explain that there are safety hazards all over the place, and this is something that definitely needs to be done, in which case there would be no doubt in my mind that we would move forward. But I'm just wondering if it makes sense, given our budgetary constraints and this high item, if it's not necessary. Or I think it makes sense for us to understand if it's necessary.
I think the difference is, in this particular one, is the available fees by outside groups will offset the projected budget, but DPW will also perform some of the required work.
Okay.
So it sounds like, you know, one board member would prefer having additional information, so if we could schedule Catherine to come in, we can move on and kind of.
It's just not the typical funding source, that's all.
Right.
Right.
But I'll have her come in.
But just to clarify, because it does say the total cost of the project of $391,080 available fees by outside groups.
Will offset.
So.
Well, no, that's two separate sentences.
Yes.
Available fees by outside groups will offset the project, projected budget, but it's not stating that it's going to offset the entirety of the budget. To get Michaela's.
No, correct. It's, that's.
If I'm, if I'm reading it correctly, and perhaps I'm not, the total cost of the project is $391,800. Or, the total cost is 391, and they're asking for 378. So the difference between the 391 and the 378, that difference is the fees. Is that, am I reading it correctly?
That's how I'm reading it.
So we definitely have to, need more clarification anyways.
So it's offset by a small amount. And again, I'm not saying this project isn't entirely worthwhile, that it's not something that's really nice to do. I'm just asking for more information. So given our budgetary constraints, and I understand that the CPC money can't be used for the wastewater, but I'm just, I think that it would benefit all of us to understand exactly what we're voting for.
Yeah, I think, like you, I mean, I'm not far from your thoughts. I mean, I think that whatever they put before us, that we owe to the residents to have a vote on this, especially at town meetings, a great time to put a presentation out. But it seems like, I mean, it's an awful lot of work being done. Do we have to do it all in one year? Can we push it off? But I'm in agreement. I think that, as much as I say I put it on the, to move forward with it, but I really think that the residents need to participate in this decision for sure. And it's their decision, not mine.
So we'll table that one.
So the motion will be to hold, hold this article?
Well, you have a motion on.
But you, there is already a first and a second, so is it possible, how do we, we don't want to say no, though, because, or do we want to say no?
Just put a hold on it and then we'll, we'll have the DPW director in.
Thank you.
Can she read, draw her motion?
We'll table the previous motion, table the previous motion, and I'd accept a motion to hold.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second to hold that particular article. Is there any discussion? No. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carol? I'm a yes as well. Motion to hold. Passes unanimously. Next article, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund budget for appropriation reserve in accordance with provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 44B, subsection 5, the sum of $425,000 for the purpose of funding the Edward A. Baker Boat Ramp at Pirate's Cove Improvements Project, Phase Two, at the site located at 388 Mashpee Neck Road, Mashpee, identified on Assessors Map 96, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relating thereto. Any questions or concerns on that article?
I actually just have a question, because I'm not a boater, but also understanding that's not a small sum of money. Is this something, maybe Tom Andrew can kind of shed some light on?
Is it comparable to the other ramps?
We've addressed the Great River Ramp, we've addressed Oakway, and this was the third one that was scheduled. So this has been in the plan right along, but we can obviously have anybody in that you would like.
Is that, is that cost comparable to the other locations?
I believe so, Mr. Chair, but I don't specifically recall the numbers. But I'd be able to provide them if you just give me until the next meeting.
I mean, just, I guess, my question is like, is it just, oh, it's going to be like a nice fancy boat ramp? I mean, is it, or is it just?
They're replacing the concrete.
Is it a safety thing?
Replacing the concrete, 35-year-old concrete.
No, I read that, but I'm, I mean.
There's a couple of things going, the scouring pads are going in to help, you know, from the power loaders that they do, get rid of that, because the sand builds up behind. The other thing is the amount of traffic in and out of that. Having these extra floats helps alleviate that traffic and the near fistfights we have down there every weekend because they can't get in. That's part of it. It's an older structure, which is part of it. I know David was probably at the CPC meeting that was brought up. You may, you may be able to shed more on it than I can even do.
I don't, I don't remember the details, but there were a couple additions that were, I think, outside some of the others with the additional dock and things of that nature. So I anticipate the cost being somewhat more than some of the other ones that didn't require that, but I'd prefer.
I don't think we're doing the, the parking areas that we did in the others.
Yeah.
Okay, so that may offset.
That might offset that cost.
Are there any other ramps on the plan to, that are coming down? This is, this completes.
This was phase three of three, I believe.
That's how I.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with the explanation. Again, not knowing, I don't have a boat, so.
It needs to be done, but I thought that this was done in less than 35 years ago. I know they did a large renovation of.
They did some ramp work down there. Did a ramp.
They did the ramp.
Yeah.
I mean, I see that.
And then the parking we had done.
Yeah.
I do see that.
It says in 2016, Tom.
I see that it includes some stormwater improvements, so, you know.
And protecting the saltwater.
That's good.
Yeah, there's a benefit in that area.
Yep.
So I'd be in favor of supporting it. How does the rest feel? Do we want to accept a motion to approve and recommend? Or do you want to hold?
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela? I'm a yes as well, that motion passes unanimously. Page four, top page four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, 10% open space recreation reserve in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 44B, subsection 5, the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of funding the 18-hole, this is the one we're going to hold, so I'd accept a motion to hold for future.
Want to remove it?
Remove.
Remove it. Motion to remove.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carol? I'm a yes as well.
So that's officially pulled.
Right. Next, we have the bottom of page four, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate and transfer to the Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust the sum of $550,000 as follows. The sum of $300,000 transferred from the Community Preservation Fund, 10% affordable housing reserve, and the sum of $250,000 transferred from the Community Preservation Fund, fund balance, both in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 44B, subsection 5, said funds totaling $550,000 to be held and expended by the Board of Trustees of said trust for the purpose of affordable housing, including any necessary costs and expenses related thereto, provided, however, that said sums shall be used exclusively for community housing and shall remain subject to all rule, all the rules, regulations and limitations of Mass General Law Chapter 44B, when expended by the trust shall, shall be accounted for separately by the trust and provided further that, at the end of the year, each fiscal year, the trust shall ensure that all expenditures of said funds are reported to the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any further discussion on that?
Can someone explain to me the, is it, who, who has the ability to apply for this funding? Or is it, is it just for the construction of the property? And are these, are these dollars being used for Mashpee residents? Are they, and at what cost are the units? Are we just projecting, or are we just looking to get money to move forward?
No, this is actually just to empower the trust to be able to negotiate if opportunities arise, so that they have money in reserve to be able to do that.
To.
It's not earmarked for any particular.
Buy land?
Whatever needs come before, whatever opportunities come before the trust. It empowers them a little bit of funding to be able to negotiate without coming to the, you know, requesting money at that time.
So looking for more land. I know we're, I know we're in a stage where we have a lot of potential projects that are going to, going to be building pretty soon. It sounds like they're, they're ready to move on a lot of these different locations. I mean, are we spreading ourselves too thin? Are we putting out money to give them opportunity? I'm waiting for projects to move forward and provide housing. I'd rather use the money for.
But this is for us, the Affordable Housing Trust, the.
We are.
We are the trust.
Use the money.
It's us.
This just gives the trust the flexibility.
Right.
When something comes along, we have the money to act on it.
If it's not appropriated now, if something pops up.
Money comes available, property comes available, we can't move forward because we don't have the funding.
Right.
We can ask Rodney to reach in his pockets.
Like a little bit.
It's just proactive funding rather than reactive funding.
If you didn't have the funding in place, you'd have to wait for a town meeting or something to appropriate.
And so with affordable housing, it's, you know, where it is, if there's any kind of opportunities that arise, we should kind of jump on it, you know?
That's always going to, you know, it's just getting so expensive and. That's something always gonna, you know, it's just getting so expensive and, you know, it's just the land cost itself, unless somebody's gonna be generous and we'll, we'll walk away with being happy that he gave somebody a real good deal so we could build some houses, you know, so.
It doesn't mean you have to, it just means that you have the ability, flexibility.
Ability.
As I understand.
It's better to have the money and not need it than to need the money and not have it. I agree.
My understanding.
Yes, I vote for.
Or foreclosed property.
Right.
Right. So did we have a first and second?
I made a motion and Michaela seconded.
You seconded? So is that?
Yes.
Any other discussion on it? Article? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that motion passes. Midway, page five, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate and transfer the sum of five hundred thousand from the Community Preservation Fund, fund balance in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter forty-four B, section, subsection five, for the purpose of assisting with funding for the Leclerc Village Affordable Rental Housing Project, property located nine fifty Falmouth Road Mashpee, identified on assessors map ninety-three six, two point four nine acres, site for thirty-nine affordable homes in three buildings. Ninety-three seven dash zero, three point two six acres, site for underground water, infrastructure and open space. Ninety-four seven dash zero, seven acres to be preserved as open space. Said property comprised of twelve point eight three acres in total, including any necessary costs and expenses related thereto as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, provided said sum shall be used exclusively for community housing and shall remain subject to all the rules, regulations limit, and limitations of Mass General Law Chapter forty-four B, when expended by the Housing Assistance Corporation of Cape Cod, or HAC, and preservation of affordable housing, POAH, or their designated entity, or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion on that? Hearing none. Carol?
Can somebody tell me where the, where this is located?
This is nine fifty.
Tom, remember we talked about this, we, this is the same one.
Oh, further down.
Behind.
Twenty-eight.
South Cape, the golf, the tennis courts.
Right, right.
The same.
Twenty-eight.
Same that we've been talking about for, yes.
Been a long time on that one, hasn't it?
Yes.
Well, they ran into funding issues.
Yeah, so this is a supplement.
And all of that.
So this is a supplement.
Right.
I thought the, I thought the foundation and the buildings would be up.
They should have been.
My answer is yes.
Hearing no further discussion on this. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom? You're a yes.
Yes.
Done. Carol? I'm a yes as well, that motion passes unanimously and is approved. Placeholder?
We have to hold on that, right?
We have a hold on that?
We.
We don't. On page six, top of page. Town manager.
Rodney?
Oh, that's your committee, four hundred for the Community Preservation Fund.
They put this in as a placeholder for a parcel.
So we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on that one until, yeah, further from the committee.
Okay.
Make a motion to hold.
Second.
Motion to hold has been first and seconded. Any discussion on that item? Yeah, I'm just gonna get clarity on that before we move forward, to see where we stand on that. I forget off the top of my head. Hearing no discussion on that, roll call vote to hold. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well.
We can just pick it up with all the rest.
So I don't know if you want to keep going, or.
Might as well, let's do a few more, get them under our belt.
So on page eight.
It's the annual.
So you're leaving the special, correct, sir?
Yes.
That was the end.
We'll, we'll go past that and continue on.
On page seventeen. Well, you got.
We got.
Article two and one you can do.
Right.
Two is the budget.
To see if the town will vote to fix.
Page eight.
Page eight.
All right. Article two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of the following elected officers as provided in Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight of the Massachusetts General Law for the period of July first, twenty twenty-three, to Ju-, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and fur-, and further, to see if the town will vote to appropriate, raise, and/or transfer a sum of money to defray the town's expenses for the ensuing fiscal year according to the following line item budget, with the maximum amount to be appropriated as shown in the column entitled Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-four Department Request, see Omnibus, Omnibus Budget, or take any other action related thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion?
I just, I have a question, and I probably should remember this because this came up at the Finance Committee meeting, but, but I don't. So could you, could you explain the additional amount that goes into the reserve fund, the additional two hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
Thank you.
Historically, for a number of years, and I want to say it's probably at least twenty years, we've had approximately a hundred thousand dollars in the reserve fund that can be authorized for unanticipated events that we run into, that we just cannot plan for. Without getting into specifics, we've had a couple hoarding situations, and it incurs a significant amount of money, some of which may ultimately be recouped if we can, but we still need the money then and there. There have been other situations, including this door right here, that was not functioning, and we felt that it was something that could not wait, so therefore we sought money from the reserve fund from the Finance Committee. Based on some of the challenges that we've seen that have come to us unanticipated, we felt that it was needed to increase. I want to assure the board that we will not spend that unless it's unanticipated and something that's urgent, that cannot wait. So this would be a turnback if, in fact, we had no unanticipated events, and I would love to go an entire year with no unanticipated events.
Right.
We've also, what's the matter?
I agree with you, it's gonna happen, but you go ahead.
The other thing that we've used this for that just comes to mind is the renourishment at South Cape Beach, when it's gone over our regular funded line item, and we've had a couple years where the storms have been wiping us out, so we needed to.
Thank you very much.
Do the renourishment. Does that answer your question?
It certainly does, and I knew it was there for a reason, but I wasn't as clear as I wanted to be, and I wanted to ask because it was a big increase thing.
Any further questions, concerns on that particular article? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Motion for Article two, to approve and recommend.
David, on Article one, it's just the reports that come from all of the individual town officers.
Acceptance motion.
It's not something that's gonna be in there, it's just gonna be accepting report.
Except, motion to accept and approve Article one.
Approve and recommend.
Approve and recommend Article one.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Article one's.
Article three, we're holding till Wednesday.
So that brings us to page fifteen.
Fifteen. And actually, those have to be.
Article four isn't numbered.
No.
That needs additional information, five needs additional information. Article six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to the other post-employment benefits or revocable trust fund, or take any other action related thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second for Article six, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion passes unanimously by all present. Article seven, it's not numbered, that one's ready to fly, to see if the town will vote to authorize the total expenditures for the following revolving funds pursuant to General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, to be expended in accordance with the bylaw establishing said revolving funds. Here to four, approved, or take any other action related thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion on that? Article seven. Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion passes unanimously by all present.
And actually, it's, I think it's hypothetically Article eight? It's not numbered.
Well, the one above is six.
Yeah, so that would be seven.
But then it's also listed article. Oh, no, okay, okay, I see.
It's a different one.
It's spaced, okay.
Yep.
We know which one you voted on.
Yeah, we know.
Because it's not numbered, so.
So the next one I'm identifying as Article eight.
Yeah.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited into Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, Injured on Duty Fund, in accordance with the provisions of General Law Chapter forty-one, Section one eleven F, for the purposes of funding injury leaves, compensation, or medical bills incurred under said law, or take any other action related thereto.
Recommend.
Motion approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussions on Article eight? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion, that motion passes unanimously.
The bottom of page sixteen.
And is approved. Top of page seventeen's looking for additional information, there's numbers to be filled in, so.
Article nine, hold.
That would be nine. Motion to hold, Article nine, I'd accept a motion and.
So moved. Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Motion to hold passes unanimously by all those present. Article ten.
This is the twelve million dollars for your wastewater.
Do you want me to read all that?
You don't need to read it. Make a motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second for Article ten, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that motion for Article ten to approve and recommend passes unanimously by all present. Moving on to page eighteen, top of the page, Article eleven, that, a motion to hold pending further information.
A motion to hold.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion on that article? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, motion to hold Article eleven passes unanimously by all present. Continuing on Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to appropriate four hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty for the appropriation for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, such fund sums to be raised from four hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty in receipts of the enterprise, or take any other action related thereto.
Motion approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion passes unanimously to approve and recommend. Moving on to page nineteen, to see if the, this will be thirteen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Community Preservation Fund, estimated revenues, the sum of forty thousand dollars to the Community Preservation Committee Administrative and Operating Expense Account pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter forty-four B, subsection five, including any necessary costs related thereto as were recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion on that article?
Yeah, I do have a question. Is that a forty thousand, what's, I mean, is it a forty thousand dollar of just funds to be available?
No, this is funds for the Secret Health Services, for surveyors, for that type of thing.
So it's specific, it's nothing new?
And it's yearly, yeah, thing.
Okay, perfect.
Hearing no, no further discussion. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously by all present, to approve and recommend. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to continue participation in a community septic management program in the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs and incentives and related thereto, or take any other action related thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion on that article?
I, I have a, I have a question.
Yes, Michaela.
So if we're, is there, is there any leeway in this, or is this written such that it's, we're going to take income into consideration with regard to the five percent interest? Are we going to do, so income, income dependent, are we going to make any of these loans available at zero percent for one cutoff, two percent, four percent?
Well, that's done by the county.
That's by the county, this is something completely.
I understand. That, that was my question about this. So, so we're not, this is, this is a set 0% in, 5% out?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That, that would be my answer, but I, I'm gonna be cautious in answering for the Board of Health.
But that is what our fund is for, for here.
For here.
Yep.
The county is a different fund.
Oh, I understand. No, I understand that, and I know what the county is doing.
We're the ones that they come to when they really can't get it anywhere else.
Right. I was, so the question was simply, is it always 5% or was there some sliding?
It's always been 5%.
Okay.
But to Michaela's point, can the town implement kind of a priority matrix for, based on income levels and how they administer that program?
I'm not, I'm not able to speak to that.
Yeah, I, I would want to check with Health in order to clarify.
Is that kind of where you're going with that?
That is where, I was just, I was curious. I was looking at the way it was written. I know the money comes in at 0%. And I thought we've been talking consistently about helping homeowners, residents who are having difficulty funding these loans. And if somebody were at low or mid-income, is there, could there be a differentiated percentage rate? That was, that was my question.
I know that there had been discussion about that earlier, not earlier tonight, but in the past, and we will get that clarified with Health.
The only thing that I would suggest is that we pass this because the explanation is where it talks about the percentage. We have to authorize this to, to have that loan reloading funds into us.
Repayment of the loans.
That's a good point.
Right. I, I don't think we need to hold. I, you know, I'm, I'm fully supportive of approving to participate in the program, but I think, you know, to Michaela's point, if there's a question as far as how we administer that program, we can do that outside of the town meeting.
After the fact, we can talk about restructuring.
And, and we will get that clarified.
Okay, so that can be taken up on a future agenda item. But we do initially have to approve participating in the program.
Participating in the program, right.
To receive the funding.
That would be, that would be helpful information to have. It would be helpful information for, for residents to have. Okay, thank you.
So did we have a first and second?
Motion in a second, and you started with Michaela.
And the discussion. So if there's no further questions, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes also. Motion to approve and recommend passes unanimously by all present. Play Savers Contract, so that one needs additional. Fifteen needs additional.
Nothing, nothing.
Holders, articles.
All of the contracts you can just skip over, sir, because we'll be revisiting those at a future date.
Okay.
Potentially what, page twenty-two?
Page twenty-two would be our next.
Bottom of page twenty-two.
I'm just numbering.
Second article. I know. Well, we're gonna have these numbered.
No, I know, for my reference, just so I know what I'm doing.
Okay.
I did the same thing.
Tonight, yeah.
So it'll be article twenty-three. The middle page of.
Twenty-two, I have.
Page twenty-two, but it would be article twenty-three.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Oh, I'm not giving it numbers yet.
Well, I am for my own.
I know, but next, our next meeting, all the numbers are gonna change.
I have twenty-two. I don't know if I messed up if Carol.
Well, I had twenty-two.
So, center of page twenty-two, we have to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the following parcel of town-owned land to the select board for the purpose of sale or lease in conjunction with use of the budding Boys and Girls Club of Cape Cod Incorporated parcel. A portion of the land shown on assessment map sixty-seven as block one and more particularly described on a plan entitled Proposed Boys and Girls Club Expansion dated September 8th, 2008, a copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk, and to authorize the select board to execute a deed or a lease therefore on such terms as the select board shall deem proper, and further to authorize the select board to petition in general court as may be necessary for the special legislation authorizing such sale or lease or take any other action relating there to.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Mr. Chair, just so you have some background on this one, this was approved a few years ago to do this, and at the time, the Boys and Girls Clubs, just before COVID, couldn't afford to go forward.
Didn't have the funds.
We checked with town council. They wrote up the, the process and got us ready for the legislature to go forward, but after hearing from our representatives, after two sessions of the legislative gone through, this is no longer valid. We have to re-vote it. So that's why we're doing it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Even council was caught off guard.
Off guard on that, yeah.
And, and we were as well. We were told by our local rep that we gotta redo it.
Okay.
Safe and solid, yet it died.
Accept a motion to approve and recommend.
So moved.
Hearing of.
John?
Yeah, I already, I already made the motion to approve and recommend.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom? Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimous by all presence to approve and recommend. Bottom of the page twenty-two, I'm going with twenty-three.
I'm going with twenty-four.
To see if the town will appropriate and transfer the sum of $152,956 from revenue available for appropriate, for appropriation to the Human Service opioid settlement account or take any other action relating there to.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Any discussion on that article? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Motion to approve is unanimous by all present. Twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to amend general bylaw, chapter one-seventy, use of waterways by adding the following section prohibiting the use of any engine or motor in excess of 10 horsepower and regulating speed to headway speed on Santuit Pond.
You know, we have a duplicate of this. There's one, the same exact one as a petition article.
No, I don't understand that either.
So why don't we remove ours and let the petition article go forward? Because we, you know.
The petitions, you don't take a position on. You don't vote to recommend or.
But why take up, we're taking up.
It shows your stance on, on the, on the position, on the article.
It's presented by the town, but it's also presented as a petition article.
Well, this, this was submitted by the Department of Natural Resources. So, I mean, you can obviously do whatever you, you want, but I would like to see you take a vote on this.
Okay, because we don't usually vote on a petition article.
Right, but this, if you keep it in.
Right, we can.
I mean, I, I understand it's submitted both, but I mean, they can work, the moderator can work that out.
Okay.
At least we take a vote to show where we stand on the issue.
And, and I would not speak for any petitioner, but if you approve this, then I'm assuming it's a moot point on the petition article.
Okay.
I just.
I was just wondering what, how to go.
I mean, we can make mention that it's also, it was also submitted as a petition article. I mean, if that.
Well, of course, the petitioner will probably get up and.
Right.
Remove it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I'd accept a motion to approve and recommend.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on this article? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is approved, to approve and recommend by all present. We got article twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to upgrade one part-time administrator secretary position, nineteen hours per week, without benefits to a full-time administrator secretary position within the Department of Natural Resources, with said position to be classified under the Clerical Union to be effective July 1st, 2023, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $666,515 from revenue available for appropriation with said funds to be distributed as follows: $26,190 to the Department of Natural Resources Full-Time Salary Account, $379.76 to the Medicare Account, $26,811 for the town's portion of health insurance, $34,056 for the town's portion of life insurance, and $12,589.83 cents to Bonestable County Retirement or take any other action related there to.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes also. That motion approves unanimously by all present to approve and recommend. Twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $75,000 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Engineering Permitting, Dredging, and Associated Expense Account or take any other action related there to.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes also. Motion to approve and recommend is unanimous by all presence. To see if the town will vote to amend subsections one-seventy-four, twenty-five, H-12 of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw Table Use of Regulations.
I'd prefer to hold off until, because this, that's, that one's gonna affect, is that planning board involved?
Yes.
Planning board submitted it, right?
Yes.
So you're suggesting a motion to hold?
Yeah, she, she did indicate that she would come in. She just couldn't come in tonight.
Yeah.
I'd accept, I'd accept a motion to hold article.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes also. Motion to hold passes unanimously by all present.
And also the next one. It's also related to it.
Yeah, it's solar, right?
Yeah.
Same thing.
And the next one after.
I'd accept a motion to hold article twenty-eight, center of the page twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to amend subsection one-seventy-four dash thirty-one Land Space Requirements Table.
So moved.
I need a minute to find my space. Okay. Got it.
I'll second that.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on that article? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion to hold passes unanimously by all present. Purpose and intent. Article, to see if the town will vote to add new section one-seventy-four dash forty-five point seven, solar energy systems to the Mashpee zoning bylaws as follows. Solar energy systems.
Motion to hold.
Hold that one as well. Hearing of motion.
What page is that on, Dave?
Twenty-five, bottom of the page.
And it goes to thirty-one.
I didn't hear a second.
Second for a hold.
Hearing of second, to hold that article at the bottom of page twenty-five, solar energy systems. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Motion to hold is passes unanimously by all present.
Can I go back just for a minute, just to ask?
Page thirty-one, David.
On page twenty-five, the, the setback requirement for solar panels, has that been enforced already? Are we, I knew somebody that approached me and told me that he was having difficulty getting a project approved because it didn't meet a law that was potentially going to be enforced.
That's what we're gonna have, we're gonna have the planning board come in, Tom, and talk about, the planning board's gonna come in and talk about all those last three or four articles, including the solar one, because there's a lot to that.
Right, and that's.
So we'll ask the questions.
I don't know. I, I have, I don't have any answers. That's, I got a lot of questions.
Okay. So moving on to page thirty-one, middle of the page, article, to see if the town will vote to upgrade and create positions at the library and to appropriate funding therefore as follows. Any questions on that article?
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
I'm gonna abstain. I'm gonna hold. I'm gonna understand this a little better before I vote on it.
Should we go back to discussion?
There's a lot to it. I mean, if you read this.
Right, that's why I'm not gonna jump into that.
If you go down to the explanation, it gives it, three existing and funded part-time positions, nineteen and a half hours per week each are listed above, will be eliminated and replaced with three full-time positions, 37.5 hours per week each, due to the updated figures recorded in 2020 census, which reflect the fact that the town of Mashpee's population now exceeds 15,000. The library has three years to increase its hours of operation to 50 hours per week to meet the full state certification requirements. We are currently at the end of the first year of the grace period to reach the benchmark. What happens is because the hours of the library have to be extended, they need, their part-time employees don't work out. They're not working. They can't get them to work. So they need to increase the full, to full-time positions for, for three existing funded part-time positions.
Otherwise, they lose their certification.
Or else they lose their certification and they don't have people to cover the floor.
And that could affect potential funding.
And funding for the library, yes.
If I could, Mr. Chair, there's been three elements that have been cited, and I know some of the select board members have been at the meetings. One is, as Selectwoman Sherman pointed out, it is about the population change, which changes the criteria, maintaining the certification for the CLAMS. And then third, the director has pointed out that historically she's had a difficult time retaining a part, or excuse, yeah, part-time employees. She does have some part-time employees that she wants to recruit for full-time, but the fact is, she doesn't have the full-time positions. So she wants to reclassify a total of four of those positions, and it would be obviously a big addition to the library as far as the full-time staffing is concerned. But in regards to the bottom line of staffing, not a lot of changes in dollars and cents with the exception of the benefit package.
Benefit package changes. That's where we see the increase in the money at the end.
And.
Are outside funding mechanisms require certification? Do they receive any outside funding other than town?
No. Well, I take that back. On the first year, the Friends may assist us in regards to the benefits, but that is not a long-term plan. That's just a temporary plan.
But yeah, just to furthermore, I think, I don't know if you were asking about regarding their part of the CLAMS network. So if they lose their certification, it affects.
Would it make us ineligible for?
Yeah, you're not, you're not interchangeable with other libraries and you're kind of pretty much like by yourself.
Yeah, right.
Yes, you're an island onto yourself if, if we're not in the CLAMS.
And she, she also explained that if we lose certification, it's, it's not as easy as it would appear to get that certification back. So we put a lot in jeopardy.
She did mention that, yes.
So with that, does that satisfy your concerns, Tom, to move forward?
Yeah. I understand, I understand the need.
I can have the library director come in and address the board if you'd like.
The explanation is.
It's pretty good.
I, I understand what Tom was, you know, when you read this, until Carol pointed out the explanation.
Sometimes if you read the explanation instead of the article, it's better.
Because the explanation is pretty right straightforward. It breaks down each employee.
It needs to be done.
Under the article.
I don't want to pressure Tom, though. I mean, if he doesn't, if he needs more information and wants.
It's up to the voters to vote. Whether I put it on the, on the ballot, it's not a problem. So I'm gonna vote yes and let the voters vote. It's their choice.
All right, so if there's no further discussion.
We have a motion and.
We have a first and second. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Michaela, I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously by all present to approve and recommend.
And this is the other part. The next article is the other part. It's the taking suit two existing and funded part-time circulation assistant positions, nineteen and a half hours per week, will be eliminated and replaced with one full-time clerique.
So I'm numbering article thirty-two, center of page thirty-one, center of page thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to create one full-time circulation assistant position at the library, 37.5 hours per week, classified SEIU grade two, to be effective July 1st, 2023, and to appropriate the, and transfer the sum of $37,402.79 from revenue available for appropriation with said funds to be distributed as follows: Medical Insurance Account, $27,882; Group Life Insurance Account, $34.56; Medicare Account, $534.11; $8,952.12 to Pension Reserve Account or take any other action related there to.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion on this article?
They, when they read this, they should explain, the town moderator should explain that it's two parts to those articles.
Hearing no further discussion. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol? I'm a yes as well.
Mr. Chair, we respectfully request that the board hold the next article because we're still working with the chief to fine-tune some numbers.
I'd accept a motion to hold Article at the bottom of page thirty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Motion to hold is unanimous by all present and passes. Top of page thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to amend section one seventy-two, dash two jurisdiction of bylaw, chapter one seventy-two wetlands, to increase the current one hundred-foot buffer to wetlands to one hundred and fifty feet as follows, per chapter one seventy-two dash two jurisdiction. I'd accept a motion to approve and recommend.
Motion to approve and recommend.
No one else is gonna second?
I was thinking about making a motion to hold, just so I can get further clarification of what the boundaries are now as compared to what they're moving to.
From a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
And then there's two hundred. So what is that moving from?
Two, two hun, two hundred, to answer your question, doesn't change. Two hundred is.
It presently is two hundred?
It's currently two hundred. For rivers.
Okay, we, freshwater marshes, what name?
That's the chair here.
We have the chair.
If you don't.
Sure. Would you mind coming forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Paul Colombo, Chairman of the Conservation Commission.
Hello, Paul.
In terms of clarifying, the two-hundred-foot setback is a riparian setback. There's a one-hundred-foot zone which is critical, but we also have jurisdiction out to two-hundred feet, which that second hundred feet isn't as critical. We do work within that. There's a five-thousand-square-foot allotment for disturbance. What we're asking for is to take the one-hundred-foot wetland setback and increase that to one hundred and fifty. And the fifty-foot buffer zone would increase to seventy-five.
Okay, and what's the reasoning for this?
Well, the reason for it, primarily, if you look at both one seventy-two-two and one seventy-two-seven, these bylaws have, they were adopted and approved in nineteen ninety-seven. That's twenty-six years ago. I didn't live here twenty-six years ago, but I know the kind of water quality problems that we're dealing with today.
And that's why we're putting in a wastewater treatment plant.
Exactly.
So why are we decreasing, why are we gonna take land away from property owners who are willing to pay for the wastewater treatment center to be built?
If you read the explanation, and I know Select Boardwoman Sherman said, sometimes it's better to read the explanation before you read the, the amendment. The explanation, at the very end, our agent put in a very clear, compelling statement, and it states that this bylaw will not take away the right of any resident to come before the Conservation Commission and have that commission work with them to provide the appropriate mitigation and allow the development that they may or may not be requesting. You know, quite frankly, the wastewater treatment plant, and I've said this, I said this at the collective meeting of all the boards, it's not a silver bullet. There are many, many things that we can be doing, no cost, and maybe in your case, low cost if there's extra mitigation for this setback. But our problem really is not gonna be solved by one piece of the jigsaw puzzle. There are hundreds of pieces. And these two amendments that we're asking for are two of those pieces that I feel, in the short time I've been here in Mashpee, are extremely critical, and they will also provide a necessary cog in whatever we propose for a watershed permit with the DEP. If we can come back and we can say, we are the very first community on Cape Cod to understand the importance of increasing a setback and give the waters a chance to recuperate, that looks good for the town of Mashpee. We're coming forward and we're being a little progressive, and we're trying to attack a situation that, quite honestly, I heard every one of you at your last meeting say, no more Title Fives, no more Title Fives, no more Title Fives. I do get that. I'm the guy at the Conservation Commission that says, can you give us an IA? Can you give us an IA? But a setback also gives us a lot of mitigation for nitrogen and, quite frankly, phosphorus, which is critical for the freshwater ponds. So I see both these amendments as being extremely important pieces of the jigsaw puzzle that we're all fighting with, and that's to clean up the waters here in Mashpee.
I agree. The waters, everybody's working very difficult, very hard, paying the monies to build these plants. Now you're asking them, you're gonna take their land, the use of their land away from them.
No, we're not.
You just clarified that it doesn't.
How am I missing that? You say you can't build on it, you can't alter it, you can't cut the trees down, you can't cut grass on it.
But there's, Paul, let me just clarify real quick.
Sure.
I don't wanna cut, cut him, but it has no effect on existing properties, correct?
No effect on existing properties.
So, so you're trying to promote building, construction, welcome people to come to the community? But the house will be different than everybody else's because of the setback requirement?
But your current regulations haven't adequately protected the water, so we, it's not that we're trying to maintain the status quo. Our waters are dying. Everything, everything.
That's why we're fixing up.
But you're not gonna realize, you're not gonna realize, one second, Tom. You're not gonna realize the benefits of that wastewater for at least fifteen to twenty years. They're not even gonna be built for, like, operational for another three to four years, and then it's gonna take ten years. We heard Brian Howes come in and say that it'll take the rivers roughly ten years to clean themselves up. So that puts you at roughly fifteen years before you see a benefit to your rivers. They could be dead and everything eutrophic where nothing is living in the rivers, and then that's further gonna impede the base.
That's why you don't let the rivers repair themselves. You send in a dredge, you get rid of the muck on the bottom of the river, and you clean it up. You give the, you give the boost to the river to help it to repair itself. By, by cutting, taking people's land away from there, you'll devalue the value of their property by, yes, you will, the use of that property.
Diminished water quality, diminished water quality is, is going to depreciate their values fast enough on its own.
No, people are moving here and paying higher than ever, and they still know that this water condition exists.
When it becomes eutrophic and the thing's dead?
It's not gonna be dead. We're making every step we can to change things. We, and you know that everybody wants to improve the Mashpee River. Everybody wants to do it. They're, they're reaching their pocket and dredging that in a heartbeat.
We're beginning to react too late, too late in the process. We've known this for, for forty, forty years. We've known that the, things are getting worse. And now we're playing, now, now, now we're being reactive to try to.
It's the wrong thing. It's the wrong thing now. You, you already have a setback. And it, and recently, with the, through the Cape Cod Commission, they told them that they're gonna abandon the, the wet water, the, some of these properties that are set, held, where there was an abandoned bomb that they, that is, they, they take as, what do they call it? Water treatment. It clarifies the water. It's not working. It's not worth it. It's not working. And that was from the Cape Cod Commission.
I'm not sure what that's relevant to.
I don't see the relevance to what we're, you know, looking at here.
Was there any other questions or concerns on this article?
Just one last thing. Tom, I understand, I do understand your concern. I, at the same time, we're talking about wastewater, we're talking about water runoff, we're talking about fertilizer. It's all, we, we need to, we need to take a bite of the apple. Like, we gotta bite the apple all the way around. And trust me, I totally understand. We're not.
Looks like you're doing it one bite at a time to me.
Huh?
Not all the way around. You're, one bite at a time. You're gonna take people's land, land away from them.
But anyway, again.
Or the use of the land.
What, we, we, it will make it harder for people that have not, it's not developed. If their land is presently non-developed, they probably will have to, they'll have to abide by the further setback. Beyond that, if their house presently is there and they're inside that hundred and fifty, it doesn't, we're not taking the house away. The house still stands.
This is an opportunity to take action now. This is, this is within the power of this board to move it forward for a town meeting to take the vote and let, put it in, 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 in the decision in the hands of the citizens of this town who have put forward a strong mandate that the envi, they care about the environment and the water quality. And we're being objectionable, objectionable to even moving it forward. And, you know, you're not going, like I said, you're not gonna realize the benefits of the wastewater for years down the road. This is something we can do now to take protective measures and try to preserve what little water quality we have left. You know, and, and it's, you know, to not do it is, sends a strong message.
The water, within that setback area that you, you're looking for, they all require a D-Nite system. They are, we, they don't get a permit unless they have a D-Nite system.
Some areas of the town aren't gonna be sewed for, for years to come. Some aren't even on the plant.
That's why the D-Nite systems are there. They're functioned. They work.
Maybe around the rivers. So I don't agree. Michaela?
It's, I think both of these are also, there are two things we can do, two related actions we can take that cost the residents of the town nothing. So I think we have, you know, another piece, as John pointed out, that is no cost as we're worried about money.
To who no cost? The town?
It doesn't cost anyone to, to.
Well, it does cost. You devalue the property. You take away the use of that land.
The property, like you said, people are moving here more than ever.
They don't know now that they're gonna cut this, they're gonna push it back.
It's not gonna devalue the property.
Come on.
People will still wanna move here.
Come on, give me a break. You're gonna take away their backyard so their grandkids can't play in there? They're gonna leave the vegetation, the natural vegetation?
Fifty feet's not the entirety of the backyard, I don't believe. Any other further discussion on this article?
Clarification. So this is all water, rivers, right?
This does not affect the riparian zone at all because that already has a one-hundred and two-hundred-foot setback. All this is doing is it's increasing the setback, the buffer zone, from fifty to seventy-five, and our jurisdiction from one hundred feet out to one fifty. And that would be for all resource areas.
And so everything beyond the one hundred feet, the one to one hundred and fifty, that would, they would, they could seek a variance or conservation.
They would, they would come to conservation, they would propose their plan. We would look at the amount of square footage that they had intended to take up, and we would require a comparable amount of square footage of mitigation somewhere else on the lot. That's generally the way it works.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So there's still a mechanism to work through it.
Yeah, I mean, and, and trust me, I'm.
It doesn't create hardship at all.
My heart's there as far as supporting it. I, I also, I'm just trying to put myself in.
But it's also saying this, John. If the commission, after a public hearing, determines that the activities which are subject to the application are likely to have a significant or cumulative effect upon the wetland values protected by this chapter, the commission within twenty-one days of the close of the hearing shall issue or deny the permit. So it's giving, it, it's laying it out that.
Oh, we're not on that article. We're on the one before.
Well, it's kinda like this.
One thing at a time.
That is not new language that we're inserting into this amendment. That's language that's part of the bylaw right now and has been since nineteen ninety-seven.
Okay, so they're not putting it in. It's already there.
Yeah, and again, it's, they are, and again, a town meeting, if, if people wanna stand up against it, but we, if we don't, if we don't make some major strides in so many different things, it's no different than what I've been preaching about cesspools. You know, we may be the first town to do a hundred and fifty, so we will be the first town to do a hundred and fifty foot.
I believe so.
And no different than, we could be the first town in, on Cape Cod to ban, officially ban cesspools. Cause that would be the first as well.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Why don't you start there?
We could, I, I wish we could.
But you can take the use of their land away. Why can't you have them put in those right systems?
I'm gonna call the vote.
Yeah.
Do, do we, did we get a second on that?
No, we didn't even do, we never even did it.
I'd entertain a motion to approve and recommend Article thirty-three with regards to amendment to cha, chapter one seventy-two dash two jurisdiction.
Motion to approve and recommend.
I don't think you should do that.
Okay.
Michaela, only because.
Yep.
I don't think there's any conflict.
There's no conflict.
I don't think there is, but I'm okay if you do.
I would just, even if there isn't a conflict, I think it's better that.
There's no, there's no conflict.
Yeah, there's, she's got no financial interests.
So you're, you're gonna second. She already made the motion.
Okay, awesome.
So I'm hearing her second.
Either.
I, I will motion to approve and recommend on Carol's second, right? Just.
I just wanted to protect Michaela because.
I, I really don't think.
It doesn't really matter.
I don't either, but nonetheless.
If I thought even remotely there was, I'd tell you.
Okay, all right. So let it stand.
Okay.
All right. If there's no further discussion.
So I made the motion, Carol seconded it, I think, but.
If there's no further discussion, Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that's.
No.
Yeah, that's a no on Tom.
Four to one.
So four to one. Motion passes to approve and recommend. Moving on to the thirty-four.
I need to get out of here.
To see if the town will vote to amend section one seventy-two dash seven, A1 permits, determinations and conditions. As Paul has stated, it is a companion article. I'd accept a motion to approve and recommend this article.
All right, so now what? I just wanna read the explanation.
The explanation is exactly the same as the explanation for one seventy-two-two.
So they're just overlying.
Exactly.
Okay.
If the numbers change in one seventy-two-two, they must change in one seventy-two-seven.
The only thing I would note, if, if the moderator explains, cause I have, we've, I've been at plenty of these town meetings where it, they're not explained as it's confusing to the public.
Yep.
That I think we, if we can just note at the town meeting with the moderator that, to reference that these two articles are.
Go together.
They all play, and they mean the same, they say the same thing on different articles. So I would motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any further discussion on this article? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
For the record, I'd like to note that Tom is not present for the vote. John?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so.
The vote would be four to zero.
Four to zero, unanimous by those present to approve and recommend. Thank you, Paul.
Rest of petition.
Rest of petition.
Nice.
You made a lot of progress.
Yeah, we did. More than we thought we would.
Yes, we did.
Moving on. Uh, additional topics, none. Liaison reports?
I got a quick one from MC three, joint base meeting. They started talking about replacement of bridges, which was probably the highlight of the meeting. The proposed costs of the bridges would be three point nine billion dollars.
Not million, billion.
And they have attained so far, I believe, two hundred and fifty million. My nerves could be off by a couple million here and there. But the proposal that still stands, just for public knowledge if they haven't seen it out there, is to replace the four lanes of each bridge with a pair of bridges in each location. Each, each bridge, right next to each other, will. Each bridge, right next to each other, will have three lanes plus walking or a bike in additional, but three car lanes in each direction, in each location, but set up with two bridges side by side. And the reason is, they would put up one three-lane bridge, basically, take down the old bridge, put up the other three-lane. You've probably heard it too, right?
We're going to end up with four bridges?
So it'd be four bridges, it'd be two bridges right up next to each other, literally within five feet of each other, with three lanes both ways. Don't know where those six lanes will go.
Yeah. Where are they going to empty?
That is, I guess they're going to make up another highway or something. I have no idea.
And this is a plan after ten, ten, fifteen years?
It's way above my P grade.
Okay, then.
So now you have it. If you have any other questions, ask me after the meeting.
Awesome.
That's enough for now. Yeah.
My liaison report is, the chamber has announced Citizen of the Year, which is Ruth, Provost, from the Boys and Girls Clubs, and nine unsung heroes. I won't name them all, but they'll be in the paper.
Anyone else?
I don't know if this isn't liaison, it's water quality.
Next item, water quality updates.
The income guidelines for the Barnstable County Grants, for the sewer hookup grants, will be available sometime this week. So they're looking at zero percent, two percent, and four percent, but they still don't have the guidelines for income. I spoke with them today, and she assured me that they would be out this week. And as soon as I know what they are, I'll let the town manager know.
Thank you. Town manager updates.
You all were informed that the SAFER grant was received. This had been previously voted on at a town meeting and by the board. Although there are four positions, I just want to remind all of you that these positions do not have to be carried out when the grant expires. And I know that, I think it was then Selectman Godley, who had expressed a concern that they would most likely be continued beyond the life of the grant. But I have been in discussions with the chief and the deputy chief, who are indicating to us that there will be an additional revenue as a result of the ambulance runs that we now are not conducting as a result of staffing. So, anyway, that is a discussion that continues. But obviously, the SAFER grant was awarded. Also, and I'll save you from details on this, but there is some specific language that I did receive from town council relative to the CIP protocols. And, and the long story short is, there is an absolute necessity to go to town meeting for ultimate approval. The one exception would be like if we had a twenty-five-thousand-dollar item and it went to CIP and was approved. It wouldn't have to go to town meeting if it was coming out of the reserve fund in an unanticipated, or, yeah, unanticipated expense during the course of the year. But there are really no exceptions. It has to go to town meeting approval.
Over twenty-five thousand?
Well, yes. If it's a CIP item and it's approved by the committee, like, let's say there's a separate funding source, like, let's say, what, ambulance receipts or something like that, which still have to go to town meeting. And that is being communicated. Cesspools. I firmly believe that you will have your cesspool counts by no later than March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three.
Did you say thirty-three?
March thirty-first.
We've had a lot of, we've had a lot of ups and downs on that, but-
Although I do have to tell you that I listened to a couple of the meetings, and two people who have had failed cesspools are coming forward and getting new ones.
But anyway, I know that that's been a hot button of yours for quite some time, and I firmly believe that we're going to have those numbers by March thirty-first, if not sooner. And I am going to be involved in a Zoom call with representatives from both U.S. Senators' Office. And the subject matter is going to be federal funding for wastewater.
Good.
And that is, I think it's, I think it's next week or the week after.
Excellent. I know with the, I was reading over the SAFER award. Couple of questions I had was, you know, that's, as I understand it, is a three-year supplement? So what happens after that three years expires? We carry the, I mean, at that point, they're full-time union employees?
Yes. Now, there's a couple of things that could happen. Number one, we may not maintain those positions or keep those positions through attrition. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Bourne did that. I could be wrong about that, but I think Bourne had the SAFER grant, and they decided not to keep those positions, or at least not all of them. The other option would be to fund them ourselves. Or the third option would be not to fund them, and again, we could go through attrition. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to have any layoffs. But clearly, the SAFER grant funds the position, the pay and the benefits for three years. And then, I guess at that point, we can assess where we are at financially, and we can also determine whether or not ambulance receipts can offset some of those costs, which I'm being told will happen through the additional ambulance runs by the chief and the deputy chief.
I guess my concern is that, you know, on a department's four-point-eight-million-dollar budget, and then, you know, you, the grant covers, I think it was one point four million, you know, that's a twenty-nine-point-eight, twenty-nine-point-eight percent increase in the budget, if we carried it at those numbers. You know, that's a substantial increase. I don't know if all that is salary or if there was some equipment.
Yeah, it wouldn't be that kind of an increase for the fire department budget, simply because the budget would carry the salary. The benefits are in another line. I'm not saying there isn't a cost. Obviously, you know, it's a cost still paid for by the taxpayer. But again, if hypothetically, the cost was offset by ambulance receipts, or a portion could be offset, then I think it's worthwhile looking at than compared to absorbing all of it. And we should be able to see over the next three years what exactly that trend is in regards to the ambulance runs, the receipts, and how much more we're taking or not taking.
Because we increased our ambulance runs.
Yes.
But I thought there was, I thought we were slightly understaffed, and there was-
That's, that's-
So we were also about, we were, they put a hole, on a hold on hiring, knowing that this grant could be accepted and be approved. I thought we were-
I fully understand, you know, the need for additional, you know, I want the folks to be safe, but if there's any expectation for us to carry the expense long-term, you know, to everybody's point that's talking about fiscal responsibility, you know, we need to ensure that there's justification. And, you know, that justification should be presented for consideration by the board before, you know, we do hiring certificates for long-term.
There's no guarantees.
Just to be responsible. You know, because, I mean, you know, it sounds like with the SAFER grant, it's one point four, five million for three positions. That's big. That's a lot, you know, so, you know, I'm in full support of, you know, keeping everyone safe and having adequate staffing. Just want to be fiscally responsible in doing so in the long term.
I do know that, as it stands right now, their runs are up, and I know that they could definitely use the staff. And I think it's primarily ambulance-driven. So I'm very curious as to how these ambulance receipts may be offsetting some of these costs. I understand your concern. It was my concern initially, and I forget how many meetings we had initially, but there were several. And I had been very reluctant initially, and I'm now curious as to how ambulance receipts can offset some of these costs. And I certainly want the ambulance to be there when somebody is calling us.
Agreed. And staff?
As I know the board does.
Was that all for town manager update?
That's all I have.
Executive session, none. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So, thanks.
Hearing first and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.